Now called order the October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two, regular meeting. Board of trustees, time being six twenty nine. Lee Bryan. But we just. At the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. May I get a roll call please?
Trusty Gator.
Here.
Trusty Bailey. Trusty Mason.
Here.
Trusty Teats. Yes. Trusty Wigan.
Here.
Mayor Proton McDonald. Your mayor shows.
Here. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? Are there any conflicts of interest related? Just start off with a proclamation. It is Down Syndrome Awareness Month. And so I have this proclamation to read and sign. Down Syndrome Awareness Month, October twenty twenty two. Approximately one in every seven hundred children born with Down Syndrome, representing an estimated six thousand births per year in the United States. And there are over forty thousand individuals live or four hundred thousand individuals living with Down Syndrome in the United States. And while research and early intervention have resulted in dramatic improvements in the lifespan and potential of those who are affected. More investigation needed into the causes and treatment of Down Syndrome. And possessing a wide range of abilities, people with Down Syndrome are active participants in educational, occupational, social, and recreational circles in our communities. And individuals with Down Syndrome should have equal opportunity to achieve a universally, a universally desired goals of self fulfillment, pride in their achievements, inclusion in their community, and reaching their fullest potential. And local Down Syndrome foundations aid families, schools, healthcare professionals, and governments to help create better opportunities, raise awareness, and facilitate solutions for those valued members of our community. I, Kayla Shosi, the mayor of the town of Wellington, do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty two as Down Syndrome Awareness Month in support of the individuals with Down Syndrome. As well as their families, their advocates, researchers, and medical professionals. I encourage all citizens of Wellington to work together to promote respect and inclusion for individuals with Down Syndrome and to celebrate their accomplishments and contributions. Then, at this point. I would like to invite Karen Iverton, then up front here, so I can have a photo taken and hand him a copy of the proclamation. You want to sit in there. All right, now we will, uh, well, thank you, it's an effort, doesn't think that was. Um, we'll move on to public comment. We will, uh, I don't be too public on individual wishing to speak on non agenda items are asked to sign up before on the podium. Um, when at the podium, please state your name, uh, for the record, and you are limited to three minutes of speaking. Yeah, yes. Uh, let's take your name. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, now we can.
My, my name, my name is Richard Pepper. I mean, you can go from there. So I had no speaker at the moment. Uh, I'll keep you sure as I can. We handed you something that is a proposed change to the marijuana ordinance. And I wanted to talk to you about four quick points about why that's what was proposed. The first point is, we wanted to keep the spirit of the original ordinance. Change the theme of what it was trying to accomplish. And, um. The reason we chose preschools is because, you know, if you want to keep children away from school. Uh, I mean, children in schools away from marijuana stores, that makes a lot of sense, especially for high school and junior school. And two thousand feet is, in my view, a reasonable, reasonable setback. Although I will tell you all the other cities. That I know about, a thousand feet, right? That makes sense to me. But when it comes to preschools and, um, daycare, you're talking about children that don't worry about parents or somebody holding them. And so we thought that it didn't have to be quite two thousand feet for that only, so we separated those out. And, uh, one of, there's, there are other reasons that we chose that. We tried to write it so that there'd be more than one eligible location. We didn't want to write something that made a location that the people I represent have a lease, a potential lease on. Uh, and that would be the only place and it would just be for us. So we, we felt that if we changed that, we looked at the town and it appears that there would be several locations that would be eligible. Another point I'd like to make, why these people would be a good choice if, if it did go about. We don't think that the best solution to Wellington, if you do have marijuana or more marijuana, plus your freeway exit, because then you have people. Everybody knows that people from Wyoming drive to Collins to buy marijuana. If you have the people passing by and they get off and they buy it and they get right back on the freeway. That doesn't do the town very much. And we're against the freeway, but far from the exit. So people have to drive through Wellington to purchase marijuana like that. I think that's better for the town. I think it creates opportunities for the businesses. There's a, there's a lot that they have under contract where the commander has under contract that is renting. Has a, uh, obvious. That would be a very big. So that's the second thing. Third thing is. The last thing is that since we're going to be on the freeway, we have to have the signs of the people that are right over there. But we think it's important that the sign is tasteful and represents the way Wellington wants to be represented. It wants to tell people that there's marijuana there, but it doesn't have to be a big giant marijuana. Big green crosses. So we thought this was the best solution to the problem that there really is no eligibility. Grass, more than one person, it's not just for us, grass more than one person, and I think it does it. Keeping with the original ordinance, those intentions. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you. And thank you so much.
And, um, first of all, I just want to thank you guys for all the work you've done on the water study. I know. You know, I take dollars for a couple of years, I know what I have to spend. I know there have been things that went wrong in the past. And that we're trying to right them. I hope that we don't do the two wrongs, you know, don't make the right thing. So I have faith that we're gonna move forward in, in a way that's equitable for everyone, so I just wanted to say that. Um, the other thing is I wanted to bring up with, with it being around election time and everything, um, I don't know if it's ever been brought up, and so I'll just kind of talk it down there. I'm just wondering if the town has ever considered right voting for when we have multiple board trustees on about the same time. Um, if that would be something that might, um, be acceptable or welcome, uh, for the town. I, I just wanted to bring it up in case it might be something that will be helpful.
Um, I just wanted to share my experience on the roundtable, um, specifically after the roundtable meetings were over, is, um, where the concerns came into place. It was behind the scenes that emails went flying. One was when staff did, um, a business survey to the, the, um, businesses. And emails from the, the roundtable. In consensus, we all agreed, um, that that was not right. Um, we didn't like that. Um, and then the second one is with the phase in options for commercial emails went flying again. We are in agreement that that's not okay. The roundtable had to keep fighting over and over. Um, one resident said they didn't want to do the roundtable again because their opinion didn't matter. The roundtable was just window dressing. It's a good thing there was a roundtable. I think there's a good thing that there's a roundtable to keep, to correct things, make sure that, um, you guys understood where we stood, um, to keep staff accountable. But, um, it did cause unneeded stress and energy in our already busy lives to have to keep on fighting and fighting. As one member said, it seems that staff has a bias. Their bias is towards the businesses. I'm talking to you because you're elected to represent us. And is the residents that vote, business entities don't have a vote. Now, if the owner owns a business and lives in town, they have a vote as a resident, but business entities don't get a vote. So why is the staff favoring businesses again and again over residents? I would like you to stop the staff pushing their agenda, and I would like you to take control of this town and do what's right for the city.
Hi, Karen Iverton, I'm a little known. I just want to say how much fun I had on Saturday with the boot shop rally in our Centennial Park. Um, it was really great to see, um, I saw a couple of trustees out there, and I saw tons of families and tons of fun and dogs and. Gosh, everybody was just having a great time, and it was really good to see Wellington come out and participate, um, in a family event and have fun and just in the best of the day. It was really warm and it was really great. I had a little heat drunk myself, goes somewhere like that, but it was a wonderful day. And then I have someone to take time to thank the board trustees for doing, um, the proclamation for Devon. I know it's not just for Devon, but he's been going at it all day long, saying it's my proclamation, so it meant everything to him. Um, and he was just super happy to be recognized. And to feel more part of the community. All day long, he told me we were going to his meeting and we were going to see his mayor and his trustees. So I just want to let you know that it meant an immense amount to lots of junior boys to feel more inclusion in the town. Thank you.
And there's no presentation on the agenda tonight. Uh, we'll move on to, uh, consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of the minutes of the October eleventh, uh, twenty twenty two. And the request to cancel the November twenty second and November twenty seventh, twenty twenty two board of trustees. Negative motion to approve.
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Trusty Bailey.
Yeah.
Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Trusty Teats.
Yeah.
Trusty Wigan.
Yes.
Mayor Proton McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosi.
Yes. All right, so there are three items under the action items which will not require action by the board of trustees tonight, but public comment will be taken on all three items. First thing is going to be proposed water and sewer usage rates and impact comments. Now, we'll start with the proposed water sewage usage rate and impact fees after the presentation and public comment. We, the trustees, will be directing staff as to a cost of service model, a water usage rate structure residential, and water rate structure for commercial and irrigation customers. Staff will also present on wastewater usage rates, capital investment fees, and raw water requirements. Megan Smith will be presenting this.
Given mayor and trustees, if you will, everyone be just one second while I get situated. I'm trying to determine the best way to. Join and be able to show my screen and still have some notes in front of me. Adrian, is okay, you can blow Bob and let him flash through the PowerPoint for me.
Oh, I didn't give him that morning. Oh, my fault. I apologize. We have done this a couple of times.
Nobody out there wants to serenade us?
I do apologize again.
Adrian, conversely, I'd also mail it to you.
Murdaugh, Adrian's getting down. Your Zoom meeting. She, you're on now? Okay, okay, now we can just promote. I've been having all kinds of issues here. Let's be, sorry guys. Yeah, hang on, there we go. Okay, Bob has been promoted.
I believe. Christmas miracle. Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Um, Megan Smith, deputy director of public work. Um, I have a really dense presentation this evening, um, and accompanying word packets. There's a lot of data and information, and we're actually looking for quite a bit of more direction this evening. Um, I am gonna hopefully, um, ask for a pause, um, at one point in the, in the presentation, so we can kind of recap and, and ask any questions at that point, kind of natural break between the rates and the theme section. Um, and then, of course, open to public comments, uh, which is the large part why we're presenting it in this manner this evening too. So, um, just to get started, so these are, um, the, there are five points that we'll be looking for public, or on all the points, but we'll be looking for board direction. Around five specific points this evening, uh, related to, um, some cost of service, uh, implementation strategies, water rate structure, wastewater rate structure. Water and sewer or wastewater impact fees, and then also we are presenting this evening for the first time for you all some information on raw water requirements and cash flow equivalents for the town of Wellington. Um, that one, we're not necessarily looking for, um, direct direction, but we are open and asking for feedback or any questions that you might have. So just a brief reminder of this recent rate study and fee updates and how we've kind of boxed here. Let me give you a really quick recap around how, um, recent history with our rate updates have been a little. Piece meal. Um, we had residential water rate updates at the end of twenty twenty, and then again in the early twenty twenty one. There were, uh, water and sewer impact fee updates in mid twenty twenty one. There was a commercial water rate, uh, update at the end of twenty twenty one, and then in beginning of twenty twenty two, we had a sewer rate update. Now. There was frustration from the board, understandably, and also from the, um, residents and that sort of kind of continuous, always something changing, something being updated. At the board direction, uh, as part of the, the, uh, rate update that came in early twenty twenty two, um, the board directed staff to pursue a, a comprehensive rate study. So not just looking at water rates or just residential rates, but looking at water and sewer, residential and commercial irrigation, looking at sewer, um, sewer for all classes, as well as considering our impact fees for development. Um, water and sewers specifically. So we kicked that off in April of, of twenty twenty one, simultaneous with, again, a more direction, developing a utility rate structure roundtable, forming our utility rate structure roundtable. That roundtable met, um, four times through the rate study process. They were integral in, um, developing pricing objectives for how the town and the utilities are looking to equitably share costs. And recover those costs of service for the utility across the entire community. Um, and I also. Sorry, this is why I wanted to note. So we also had, um. I didn't put them in this PowerPoint presentation, but they were included in your packet memo, sort of those rate objectives or pricing objectives, rather, that were developed through the utility rate structure around. And I listed them in the packet as they were listed in the recommendation memo that came from the rate structure roundtable that was presented to the board at September twenty eighth work session. Uh, those, those, uh, rate objectives included, um, essential water use pricing, uh, included minimizing customer impact. Uh, ensuring cost recovery between new and existing customers, hence the review of both rates and impact fees at the same time. Also ensuring cost recovery between classes, so between our residential, our commercial irrigation, um, multi-family, all those. We presented both Rattellus and staff were here to present our initial findings from that rate, the rate study at the October fourth work session. Uh, those initial deliverables included, um, cost of service that we had developed, uh, for the different customer classes. It included five-year financial plans for both the water and the wastewater utility and enterprise funds. Um, it also included, uh, information on rate structure, best practices, and recommendations, rate structure recommendations that were informed by the utility rate structure roundtable. Now, as, uh, staff understood at that presentation, there was a request to see if there was an opportunity. To, if there are any additional opportunities or ways to recover those costs of service, um, that could reduce some of the significant impact to the highest commercial user. Um, with that in mind. Um, staff did work with, next time, uh, Rattellus to review, um, what those options could look like. We came up with three, uh, three options, three, three new ideas that you didn't have in front of you at that work session. One of them is an additional rate structure, uh, type of rate structure for commercial users, which I'll get into in a little bit, um, a couple flights down. The other two were related to how the cost of service and how the recovery of those costs of service are implemented, um, either all at once. Across all of our customer classes, or the potential of phasing in those, um, cost of service changes, which includes also that five percent rate increase in total. That Rattellus spoke of the utility would need, um, for the next several years, um, moving forward. So I do want to acknowledge, let me just stay here for a second. I do want to acknowledge that, um, staff did receive some feedback from the roundtable that, um, there may have been some miscommunication. In that packet memo, and I want to acknowledge that. There's a statement in that packet memo that acknowledges that staff, um, does recommend that cost, that third cost of service, um. Scenario of implementation as aligned best with what we understood of our goals and objectives from the board, and also aligning the utility rate structure around table pricing objectives. I do want to clarify that it was made clear during the roundtable process that the roundtable was not in favor of phasing in rates. Phasing in cost of service, we don't really get into the difference of cost of service versus rates. They did make it clear that they weren't interested in that phasing that in. My, uh, my point of, in saying that it aligned with their objectives is that these phased in approaches do align with equitably recovering. Cost of service between classes that also aligns with minimizing the significant cost impact to customers, um, in one whole food. So that was my intention with that statement. Just wanted to be very clear there. So we're gonna, um, roll through here and look at some of these. First, the water usage rates. So these are the base and volume rates being proposed as options for all of our customer classes. Starting with our residential customer classes, um, which does include both single family and multi-family. So these options that you see here, we've kind of boxed them in, which didn't get put in, in the PowerPoint that was in your packet, but for clarity for our presentation tonight. We do have the first option, which is one of their utility rate pressure roundtables, number one choice, which does include an essential base use or essential water use pricing in that base tier, which includes three thousand gallons per month. Of use included in that base rate of forty nine seventy one, and then you would see those tiered, uh, structures down in the second half of that top table. Um, of course, the zero to three thousand gallons, that's zero, because that would be included in that rate. And then there's a, a, a dollar per thousand gallon charge listed for tier one, two, and three. Now that, um, sort of complimentary rate for the multi-family would have the same structure, three thousand gallons included in the base rate. There is, um, different actual dollars or rates for that structure. Is there are different cost of service associated with, um, multi-family, person, single family? If you can imagine, there's a bit of kind of twofold, an economy of scale, when you're serving a multi-family, a traditional sort of apartment style complex, where you have a single meter, single infrastructure heading that direction. And then it's, it's, um, being split up and in the building, so there's that point. There's a different level of stress on the system, and most multi-families don't have irrigation, so their peak day demands or their peak season demand for sure are, are less. And then also, um, the way these, uh, rates are being proposed is the base rates that have been proposed for multi-family would be a per unit rate. So unlike a single family home where you would just in line, these are all structured similar, but in line with, you know, option one, it would be forty nine dollars and seventy one cents per base rate. Uh, for a duplex, let's say, their bill would actually reflect like sixty two dollars, right? It'd be thirty ninety five times two, or four, or ten. However many units there are behind that, that meter. Moving to the right on that table, then, we have the second option, which this option includes two thousand gallons of essential use in that base rate, right? So just a little bit less available. That does generally cover like a single person. For a, a couple who is aware of their use, um, can usually. For a a couple who is aware of their use, can usually fall in that bracket of 2,000 gallons. And that would hold true again also for multifamily, for 2,000 gallons per unit, not per tap, but per unit. And then again, on that option three, this is a uniform rate structure. So every thousand gallons that you that is used would be paying the same rate, whether you use 1,000 or 10,000 each set of thousand gallons would be the same rate as opposed to a tier structure that does have an increasing rate as you cross those threshold into the higher. I do want to highlight there on the far left and all of the tables are structured in a similar way for ease of reference. I'm taking longer on this slide. But there on the left is our existing rate structure, rates and thresholds for our tiers. So I want to highlight that on this slide is the rates that were associated with cost of service scenario one and three. So cost of service scenario one was all of the information that you saw at the October 4th work session. That is where we highlighted the cost of service for 2023 to to service all of our customer classes and compared that with the revenues that we got in 2023, or if we, excuse me, with our existing rate structure, right? And then that produced a set of changes that would be needed. There was a slight increase need for single family, a decrease in multifamily, a much larger increase in commercial and irrigation. So I just want to highlight that these are the, yeah. These this set of of rates here on this this slide is for cost of service scenario one and three. Because for cost of service scenario three, we are recommend, it is proposed that the only rates that would get phased in would be for commercial and irrigation. There there is no change. So whether we phase in all the cost of service at the same time, which is cost of service, which is the scenario one, or we phase in just commercial irrigation, which is the scenario three, there is the same impact to residential, single family, multifamily residential rates. So they remain constant through both of those scenarios. Okay, second one. Now, in this one, you will see an increase in those rates as what's happening in cost of service scenario two. So scenario two is that all cost of services are kind of being proportionately transitioned across. So where we've identified perhaps that multifamily in in the way that we're trying to recover costs now based on pricing objectives that we developed, the way that, for example, multifamily would be seeing a reduction, that reduction would get phased in at the same time that the commercial irrigation and bulk and single family would get phased up, right? So it would be a slower impact and eventually would get at that equitable cost recovery across all classes, but not until 2027. And at this, this approach would result in a pretty significant difference in especially the multifamily rates, but also in the single family rates. All right, we received, fast break, yeah, the at the budget bonanza a couple of weeks ago, the 18th, a little year ago. We received some great questions from the public and had some really good engagement interaction. And one question that we received that actually prompted this slide was what is the impact or difference between all those proposed rate structures for residential? One that has 2,000 gallons included in the base rate and one that has 3,000 gallons included? This helps us kind of break apart what that difference is. So what you see on the left, this is the rate structure option one, 3,000 gallons included in the base rate. This is showing that 47% of all bills, residential bills that went out in 2021, would have been captured within that base rate. So if you move to the right, this is the same graph, but for the two, for the second choice, which has 2,000 gallons. All right, so you see a little bit less there, 31% of bills were felt would have been contained or captured within 2,000 gallons. What that means, what I see from this graph is that there is the difference between 31 and 47. So what is that, 16%? Yeah, would be paying, let's see how to rephrase this best. There are 16% of the users captured on the left plot would be paying for water they didn't actually use. Yes, that's the point. Does that make sense? Because there is more, I'd say yes, some with nods and some nots. Make sense? All right, moving on. That was a great, this is why we're just, that's a great question. All right, so moving on to commercial irrigation and water rate structures. I do have three separate sets of tables. So again, while I'm at the beginning, it's such a dense presentation, that there are three separate sets of tables and three individual slides highlighting the rates for both commercial and irrigation, and those are independent, right? There's four choices of rate structure for commercial, three choices of rate structures for irrigation are quite different. So these slides are the rate structures are independent of each other. But there's a set of rates for each cost of service scenario. So again, this first cost of service is what you all represented as part of that work session on October 4th. It would reflect implementing the full cost of service changes across all classes. At the same time, in 2023, it also reflects that 5% increase embedded in that as well. Moving down one slide, that's the cost of service scenario two. This is where we're making some very, very slow changes. We're spreading out all those transitions. There would still be a rate increase embedded in here across all classes, but we're really slowing down, transitioning those cost of service for recovery across all five classes. That results in some pretty low rates, not much different than where we are now. And then moving down again to the third cost of service scenario. This is the scenario that would be looking at implementing 75%. So essentially, we'd be looking at spreading commercial and irrigation cost of service changes over two years. 75% of it would be captured in year one and remaining 25% would be captured in year two. So it's still a pretty quick turnaround and change, but but it is a phased in approach. I will say one thing that that would allow us to do is, you know, it's October 25th. It would just allow for some opportunity for additional outreach, some targeted outreach to some some of these customers that would look to be pretty significantly impacted. I do want to highlight also, every time when I think this is true across the entire town organization, but every time we try and do something here, we try and do it better the next time than we did the last time. And I would freely acknowledge that this is pretty different than what we've done in the past, at least in the past few years, where we're looking to update all of these rates and fees at the same time. So it's a really cohesive package that they all interplay and are interconnected. But we also understand that perhaps how things have rolled out in the past wasn't perfect. There wasn't always the best communication. There wasn't always the best in terms of worrying. There wasn't always the best engagement around it. And we're making huge strides with each one of these efforts. And I I would just like to acknowledge that the largest reason that I see this option in this slide that is it would allow us an opportunity to engage a set of customers that weren't readily engaged in this process. And it would just allow us to warn them ahead of time a little bit. I do understand that that they're one of the same race perhaps in past decisions that have been made. All right, so let's move to wastewater, which is way easier. You have in front of you essentially a single set of proposed rate changes for wastewater. There is a couple of differences that we're proposing to make to the rate structure for next year as it is now. Mainly, it is that currently the base rate that we charge includes 3,000 gallons of of use, right? So your your wastewater usage volume is based on your residential, is based on the winter quarter average, your January, February, March water consumption. And if you're in those lower tier users, again, you can end up being in a bucket where you're not actually using 3,000 gallons a month, but we are charging you for 3,000 gallons a month. So one of the things we're proposing is taking out that that use embedded in the base rate and it just being this individual base rate that you see there, 13.95. And then it would be a per thousand gallon charge on top of that. Again, it would still be for residential based on that winter quarter average, January, February, March of water use. And then one more significant change would be in how commercial customers would be billed. Commercial customers, we are proposing would be billed, their volume rate would be billed on actual monthly use, water consumption. You think about various businesses work, currently they are charged at the same winter quarter average, but it could be that production for them actually ramps up in summer, whether it's a restaurant, a brewery, an industry, manufacturing. You know, we actually do have some industry here in town. Maybe their production ramps up in the summer and we're not capturing that. Maybe their production wanes in the summer and the production is in the winter. And so they're getting charged higher through all these months, I should be. So this would be one way to kind of allocate more effort. We make sure we are recouping the costs that's in with all users. There would be kind of a return factor that would be applied. We do know that especially in a production environment, not every drop of water that's thrown out of the tap gets put down the train. A lot of these building in the form of food, beer, product, that sort of thing. Also, there can be irrigation utilized with some of these commercial customers, too, so that try to capture a little bit of that. So those are the two more significant changes. But as far as rates go, it would be the same for commercial and residential, multifamily as well. So now that we have all the rates and both water and wastewater presented, we can kind of look at what these scenarios would look like for residential. So I have some comparisons here, two, two slides, one with the cost of service scenario one and three, which again have the same rates for residential. And if you look at the bottom, all right, let's let's bring you to the slide. Bars on the far right, those are our existing rates. There's four different kind of use scenarios on the bottom. So there's like a really low use of both water and sewer, 2,000 gallons for both. There's two sort of more interim uses, 4,000 gallons for both, 7,000 for water, 4,000 for sewer. Again, thinking that's going to be based on that winter quarter average, which is typically 4,000 in our community. And then 15,000 and of water and 4,000 of sewer, that's kind of to represent sort of summer month of irrigation in place. Right? So you can see across all of these scenarios, those lowest users would be seeing a decrease in their monthly bills. Now, please note what this doesn't do, this doesn't include stormwater. That's like $11, I think, and $12 in addition to this, but just want to highlight that. Otherwise, it is the bulk of by far what your utility bill looks like for the town. Kind of same goes for that low to middle user, right? 4,000, 4,000, you would still be seeing on average a monthly decrease in those bills. Where you would start to see an increase or kind of on par is that that other mid-grade user. But then in the summertime, there would be a pretty significant increase for irrigation. If you think about the the structure of those bars on the far right, if you look at that that far right bar, $175, that's usually 15,000 gallon of water compared to on the far left, 2,000 gallons, right? So it's like seven times more water and like 60, 70 dollars difference in price. So it doesn't, this is where the sort of equitable equitable cost recovery within a class is looking at, right? There's a peak demand on the system, that irrigation demand is the hardest thing that we have to meet. And it's the it's the largest demand and we have to size everything for all of our infrastructure side to be able to meet that summer demand. That's where those price price increases come from. So the very next slide then represents exactly the same thing, except it would be those those rates under cost of service scenario two. So you can see everything goes up a little bit. Well, at least the all the mid and high users go up quite a bit under that scenario. And honestly, at this point is where I was hoping with the mayor's discretion to maybe take a quick pause and see if there before we launch into the two other topics that we have, which are water and sewer impact fees and then raw water requirement, cash and lieu. Wanted to see if the board had any questions or verification to this point. And we'll of course stop for public comment at the end of the session.
That was the first time I noticed. Still getting there. The first thing I wanted to do is thank you, I know at the budget bonanza, you guys did the dot exercise. And so what we saw there was by the time I left, the overwhelming response were option one. I think there were two dots outside of all the dots, but I know there were outside option. So that was the overwhelming response. I was there when you got the question that you acknowledged in the slide, and I think that is very proactive of you to be able to put that together for us and see, considering that is what residents brought to you as a question. So I appreciate you doing that very much. So I wanted to say thank you for that first. The other thing I was noticing and have questions about. Oh, I do want to acknowledge something, I think, as well, because there's unfortunately been a lot of heat on staff regarding this. But I do want to make it very well known that during the working session, I'm the one who challenged this staff to look at some additional options for commercial. That was not a staff-directed bias direction. That was a, hey, other communities right around us are doing it differently than what we're proposing. I challenge you to look at it in another way. So I want to make sure that's really clear, because if you get unfair, that staff would get unfortunate reactions because of that when it was something that I personally directed and then had the, and then the entire board was okay with that as as the direction to do some research. So I do want to put that out there, because our staff did a great job and they follow up on things that we asked them to do or the community comes to them and asks them questions about. So I see a brilliant job, so thank you. Okay, the other one I wanted to note is I noted that similar to the commercial request that I made, I do want to note that that similar function is done in residential as well. So for example, the tier rates and quantities are different from multifamily versus what they are for single family residential, right? So that same, essentially that same consideration of what is the actual cost of service to provide water or sewer to those users has been acknowledged about because there are different ways of using water between multifamily and residential single family. So that same thing that I was asking for and challenging for commercial rates is this is the policy that's been applied to residential. So I just want to make that comparison. So it is not so far off to consider that, because we're already doing that in the residential option. Okay, the other thing I had here, what is the return rate for sewer on the commercial? It says, oh, it's applicable by a certain return rate. And I don't know if I ever paid attention to that.
I hope I didn't know that, I can't remember. I'm off the top of my head, I may not be. It would be 85%. So the assumption would be 85% of water consumed is returning to sewer.
Okay, I think that's, yeah, okay. I thought it was going to be like 99% or something, that wouldn't make sense, but 85 means a lot more. Okay, and I do also acknowledge that the roundtable never made recommendations for phasing it. But a comment I made was how that considerable change, that the majority, the most significant difference from what difference of what's now and could potentially be was 300, 1,000 times percent difference for some of our users versus others. And that, although fair for making sure, and it is always acknowledged by me, and I think everyone has kind of mentioned this, that each class should be responsible for paying what it costs to provide their service. So the goal is that every class pays for their cost of service. I don't think that's ever been questioned as as a goal, and that's something we agreed with the roundtable makes complete sense to me. And I completely acknowledge, I think, it's it's a good way to go. So that's not necessarily the question, it's just acknowledging that it will be such a significant difference from now and later. The comment has been made that maybe they've been receiving a discount this entire time. I understand that, but there's only a few months between now and what will changes could occur. And that is, might be shocking to some business owners. And our business owners, our residents, our business owners impact the cost of living of every single one of our residents. Because if their prices go up for their products and services, every single resident in Wellington would be paying more somewhere. So that's why that comes. So that's why that consideration, I think it's really important to consider those differences. Um, and I just want to make that very clear, I don't think one is more important than the other, but I'm trying to look at that whole picture of how much money it actually comes out of the pocket of every resident. Whether it goes to the town for water, whether it goes in town for sewer, or whether it's paying for their food at Ridley. So all of those cost more somewhere, what is that impact to each one of our residents? So it is more complex than just what your water consuming looks like. Um, and I think that might be, it's. Oh, the other thing is every single one of the residential rates encourages water. Which should be and always should be the, the goal of um what we're trying to accomplish here. To make sure people can play, pay less and be more responsible and live as a community, taking care of each other by being efficient with their water. So I think all those options in front of us encourage that.
Thank you for all that clarification. Uh, trustee here.
Yeah, so I did want to make one clarification, this, I did go back and listen to the work session and. The request that had been put out, which I appreciate that we put in there was looking at another option for tiers for commercial. The phasing was never a request for, and so where the challenge comes in is that the board had actually made it. Fairly clear that there was no desire for phasing in that work session, and so the concern is not that there was added. Tears for commercial, because that was asked for by trustee daily and the board was fine with looking at different tier options, because that looked at keeping. The commercials still covering all of the cost of service. The challenge is when we look at phasing, whether it's residential or whether it's commercial, we're now saying we're not going to cover the cost of service. We're leaving a portion, whether it's one five percent, whether it's whatever percent of the service uncovered. That's a problem and that was never the direction of the board, so that's where the concern comes in, that that was put in and then that was stated that this aligns with what the board priority was. Because the board chair, we want to see everyone paying their share, we want to see everything paid by those classes. And we have been in a situation where for multiple years, we have seen the residential class carry the cost of the water challenge the town has had. And just beginning of this year, the commercial got brought somewhat in line with that. And we were still looking at that coming out of the water surgery, the water study, that the commercial class still was not carrying the burden of their cost of service. And so if we go into a situation where we say we're going to phase that in, what we're doing is we're now putting a strain, a strain on the water fund. Because that money has to come from somewhere, so it's going to come out of our fund balance. The concern that I have is that if we start digging into fund balance, we run into a position where we have to change rates again and that likely will come back and impact residents. Even if it doesn't impact them in the rates proposed today. Yet for whatever reason, you have the higher expenses, lower incomes and our fund balance starts going farther negative. We now are in a position where while we gave up a portion of these commercials to try and do something good for them, like Zachary residents, yeah. So I have multiple concerns with that, because the only comments that were made to go and do study. To go and look at phasing was made by staff that were not comments from board trustees. The only board direction was to look at tier options for commercial. Um, so I don't have any issue with the tiers, I do have major issues with looking at phasing, because that's something the round table made abundantly clear when they presented to us. They didn't want to see, our board made that abundantly clear that we weren't looking to see things phasing, continuing to. Have a gap in our water companies since the last two years trying to get out of a hole that the town dug itself into over the last decade in water. And we're not looking to continue doing that. Um, it also was concerning that we're steering away from a lot of the direction that we got and talked about, we got unanimous direction from. The round table and then we're saying, well, they didn't want to do this, but we should look at this anyways, and this is the preferred option. Now, if staff wants it up preferred for staff, that's fine, but for staff then saying this means what the board was looking for and the round table. The board never said they wanted to see phasing, maybe one member, but one member is, people have told me many times, does not speak for this entire board. Um, so I think I have no issue with the options that were presented, I think the budget banana was. There was three by the time we ended, I think, that were not option one, um, so I think it was pretty clear that people wanted to see that one, I appreciate that it includes that base usage. So if you have low water use, you're not paying those additional tiers, and again, it does. For some of the higher users, they are constantly going to see some higher bills, so again, I told people many times, my family of age should be paying more for a lot of my brother. It's just himself, he should not have a water bill that's twenty dollars different than mine, which is currently where it is today. And this would actually bring that in line, because now he would fall into that bottom tier and I would be in the higher tiers, which is roughly where that should be. And I also appreciate as trustee daily said, if this does give you the resident the option. To control your bill, if you want to use fifteen thousand gallons of water, that is going to put a strain on the system, you're going to have to pay for that. If you're going to be efficient, you can get it down to three thousand gallons of water, right, you're going to have a lot lower bill than you did before. Where before it really didn't matter, because you have a huge base rate, I don't care how much water I use, because. It's five dollars per thousand gallon versus my sixty-six dollar base rate, it's ridiculous, so I appreciate the changes on that. Um. And I think that we should be looking at that, um, I think that the cost of service one should be the only scenario that we're considering. Um, so those are the comments that I had. I have other questions on the changes with the. Upcoming, upcoming ones, so I'll, so chat those.
Thank you for that clarification, trust me here. Trustee Keith.
I am extremely grateful to the sewer and water round table for all the effort and energy that was placed into. The packet, I know I said at the work session, I had a chance to go in and look through everything that the town and. The water round table did, it was a lot, there was a lot of notes, a lot of numbers, a lot of data. Um, I will say, one thing I did bring up to Megan when I met with her and. Um, Patty yesterday was the new tier rate for multifamily. Almost halved what was initially suggested in the work session. And that was brought to my attention that Raffolus. Uh, did an error or number in his calculation, correct Megan?
Um, yeah, there was a reference to something else I also determined though and some follow-up from that, so. There was an update that was made to the model that resulted in some of that change, there was also a um. When we were going through the rate study process and especially with the round table input. There was some concern that the reduction in cost that we were seeing and cost recovery needed for multifamily was so significantly, such a significant change. Um, we didn't want to have the risk of proposing a rate that was too low and then having to raise it, so that cost. Um, they didn't imply that full cost change in the model, it was listed correctly in the report, that dollar figure. But I had that reflected in the model for fear, anyway, so that got caught and changed and that, that was the bulk of that change. Um, came from that, so it's that full cost recovery reflection.
Got it, so what do we define as multi-family?
Uh, any unit that's served by more than, uh, any tap that services more than one unit.
Got it, so duplexes would.
If it's served by one tap.
Got it, so and that's where my concern came in is when I did the numbers and just kind of grazing over it. Four thousand gallons of water to someone living in a duplex, it could be a five-bedroom duplex with a large family living in it. They're going to pay seven dollars and eight cents per thousand gallons. But a residential home that has maybe two seniors living in it. They're going to pay eleven seventy for that four thousand gallons of water, so that, that was one of my concerns when you're looking at. Are we giving a large discount to multifamily, when I, I understand that they might not have the same tax on the system. But a lot of the duplexes even over in my area are large family duplexes. Who do have five bedrooms, three thousand square foot in a home, so. They'll be getting a huge tax rate if they have one unit serving those two split homes.
No, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. You live on the east side of the interstate? Did you look at those duplexes and see if they were serviced by one meter or two?
I haven't, but that's what I'm saying, that they're not, if they're serviced by one.
Yeah. Duplexes are two traditionally, like one breach unit, um, on the newer construction from my understanding, both. I think it's a valid point.
So and it's, it's just a concern of mine, I know we're going to be revisiting this again um yearly. So it's definitely something, but how to explain that to residents? When they're seniors living in a home that has one meter. And they're paying eleven seventy and another person is paying seven dollars and some odd cents for their water. That one's hard to stomach and hard to swallow to say. I feel comfortable making someone who chose to buy a home instead of a duplex. They're going to pay more for their water just because they live in a home versus a duplex. Or town home, so that was one of my major concerns when that changed from the work session packet to this packet. And I just, I don't know how we go about. Being able to address that, if we can address that, but the goal from my understanding was equitable. But equitable in the sense of what it takes to process, but also equitable in residential and multifamily. If the goal was equitable and equal. We haven't accomplished that quite yet with that tier structure, at least that's how, what I would say I feel about that. But other than that, I'm grateful that the town, knowing that you guys have been short-staffed and shorthanded. You're building a water plant and a wastewater plant, you guys still were able to do all of this. Meet with the round table multiple times, get numbers. I know I ask questions on a regular basis and almost always get answers back within the day if I have questions. Um, I think it's good to have questions, I think it is good to ask and good to know. Because if I have a resident asking me a question and I can't answer it, I'm not a user of purpose. And we kind of are meant to be that middle ground to ask all the questions that residents sometimes feel. They don't have time to ask, I'll just send a text message or an email to this person, they said on the board they can ask these questions. So it has been discouraged by me for asking multiple questions from some that. Do sit and I just want to say, I think it's really healthy to ask a lot of questions, because. This is education and if you don't educate yourself, you're not going to make a right decision.
Trustee Megan.
Appreciate all the work you've done and uh, I know one thing that we've always discussed is making sure that people pay their own way. I believe uh scenario one does do that, does do great uh service to that direction. That's definitely going to be the way I'm going to be uh supporting uh. You know, the multi-family are concerned there, I can see that, you know, if it's a multi apartment. And I think from what I had understood at our, or the round table. Uh, was that multi-family with one meter. And that's pretty much just standard apartments, probably going to be the low rent uh. Lower income people, so hopefully that's the ones that is going to take benefit of that. Uh, I know us elderly people. Uh, it would be nice to have a little bit of a break, but guess what, we use water just like everybody else. And good, bad or indifferent, you know, we got to pay our own way also. Uh, so I think the main thing is, is having everything as equitable as possible. And I think that's where we're going, uh, you know, commercial, I, I know that's going to be hard on them. But it's been hard on everybody and I think we all got to suck it up at this time and do what we got to do. Uh, we have to pay for our water treatment plan or wastewater treatment plant, good, bad or indifferent. Uh, you know, that is what's in the agenda here, so we just have to do it, so. I'm looking forward to being able to vote and you'll get this thing in the process and uh. Good, bad or indifferent, I think it's going to be helping for the community, thank you.
I like your accent. We're giving it a go here. Megan involved, thank you so much for your hard work on this, we're the worst, we're hard to try and reach the community for their feedback. And you've come to the board and asked for our feedback, taken it back, pulled it apart, digested it, done the same thing with community feedback. And one of the trustees um mentioned that when we make a change to commercial rates, it doesn't just impact our commercial users. It also impacts our residential users as well. And that's through the increased cost of goods and services and I very much appreciate. Whether there was a misinterpretation of direction from the board to approach the, the phasing scenario. Uh, or whether it was. A liberty that staff took based off of their expertise and knowledge. I don't think that that's the case, I think that I had an interpretation as well at some point that we were looking at a phased approach for commercials. Because of the economic uncertainty facing us, we also talked about, you know, the equitability factor relative to. The um subsidies we provided for residential vendors initially and. I haven't heard about any sort of. Option that we can provide for those small business owners or mom and pop shops that want to open. Ten years ago, Wellington was nothing but residential household with one or two businesses. We couldn't even keep our grocery store stocked. And now we have a thriving Main Street, we're attracting businesses that are mostly um local people that live and work here. And for us to not be considerate and not even consider that phage project would be a huge disservice. So thank you so much for bringing that forward, I, I think the best would be my direction for our.
Yeah, so I, I do want to again thank the round table and staff for doing everything you guys have done here, making, putting all, all this together and making it easy to get. Has been just phenomenal, um, I did want to point out as far as the multifamily stuff goes. Uh, you know, they do actually see an eighteen dollar and seventy-six uh cent difference in the base rate there, so I think that's partly how we're making up. The difference in the uh tier amounts there, I've looked at a lot of the different models here and I think that option one is certainly the best way to go. Um, you know, from the raptouse study, uh, the board understood that eighty-five percent of Wellington residents are covered under that option one. And uh, in addition to that, I would also agree that. Um, I don't think a phased approach in approach would be appropriate here, I'm not interested in an eighty thousand dollar. Uh, budget shortfall for that fund, um, so I would say, uh, yeah, I'm in support of a cost of service scenario one as well as option one. And uh, again, thank you to the staff, even if, you know, putting in other options for us to look at phasing approach, no matter what it may be. We need to make sure that we're looking at all of the options, not just, not just a few options, we need to look at all the options, so thank you guys again for doing it.
Um, for all, thank you to the round table, you guys did a lot of hard work, but didn't want to do it. Um, town staff, thank you for giving us options. Um, the more options we have, the better educated we can come to our conclusions, what can work best for the town. For our residents, everybody involved in businesses, um, so I appreciate that. Took heed for it, they took it like champs. Um, I myself, I, I do like scenario one, I do like what we had discussed at the round table there. I mean, that being said, it, it doesn't really feel great not phasing in, but I don't think it's the right approach either. Um, I think we just need to. Cover the budget, make sure that we're taking care of the water fund and, and going about our business that way. So that's, that's all I have to say there. Um, I guess we will continue on the presentation at this point.
I appreciate that um opportunity for you to bounce questions in the middle, because this is a lot and there's still more to go. Alright, so uh, I think it does get easier though, and then I. So my capital investment. Um, we are bringing to you um. We are bringing to you proposed changes on both water and sewer capital investment fees. Um, as a reminder, there, Colorado, the state of Colorado has statutory requirements around how um. Impacting can be calculated, what costs they can cover, um, there is a little more, you know, regulation around this piece. It's. Uh, raptelis did use uh kind of a hybrid approach of both the uh this buy-in method versus an incremental method. Uh, both of those methods are specific for calculating um. The, the design to recover the cost of capacity to serve. Right, so both of those, and it's an integrated piece about whether those costs that we're asking for are covering proposed. Those costs that we're asking for are covering proposed growth. Um, or covering, are they, are they an incremental buying to existing um backbone infrastructure? Or is it buying in and helping us pay for new infrastructure? And in our case, it's a little bit of both. Um, hence that phase approach. So you can see here the current water tap fees on the far left and our proposed water tap fees. These are um pretty straightforward in these changes. Um, except for in this area of a multi-family residential tap fee. Historically, we have not, the town has not had separate residential um multi-family tap fee. They've been charged the same amount as just a regular single-family home, single-family development. We don't, haven't had a great deal of uh multi-family development in, in Wellington, but as the world will help, it becomes a point of. Of effort across all of the front range, all Colorado that matter. Um, it's, this really will be um. A useful criteria for us to have in our toolbox. Um, as a community and, and it's based on the reality of what it really takes to, to meet the services required for multi-family development. That puts different kinds of peak demands on the system, uses water differently throughout the year than a single-family home does. Again, there's a little bit of that economies of scale that gets um built into building the multi-family development as well. That's why there is this reduced um. Uh, proposed rate um for impacting from the water and sewer related to uh multi-family development. Now, I will say, um, there are some other ways that you can come out multi-family. Sometimes they come in or looking for a larger price tap. Um, and that would align here um with the um. Single family or rather just the proposed water, water tap fees, right? And not just a single three-quarter inch tap. Um, so these are the proposed water and sewer capital investment fees. Um, the difference with sewer then is that we currently have two. Um, and we base it sort of. Not in a best practice method, which is currently based on the size of sewer line as opposed to the size of the incoming water line, right? So which there is a relationship. Um, hence the eighty-five percent even for the commercial, there is a relationship between how much water you use and how much wastewater you're going to produce. Um, and so to base those um sewer tap fees also on the size of that water tap makes. A lot of sense. It's really best practice across the community and great, great structure and it's kind of standard uh across front range methodology. So those are our proposed changes uh for water and sewer capital investment fees. Now I'll come to the raw water requirement. So again, I want to highlight, we're not necessarily looking for decisions from the board on this topic. Uh, we do know that this is something, this, when we're talking about impact fees, this really is another. Impact fee that we collect um from our development communities that come into town to ensure that we have adequate raw water supplies. Um, moving forward into the future and that they're kind of developing to pay their own way in terms of, of providing that raw water. So we took this opportunity internally to review on the last update, which was in second half of twenty twenty. So we're due to update this again. Um, in both, there's kind of two parts to this. There is the, the volume of raw water requirement. And then there is the cash and lieu equivalent should a developer look to pay cash? And there's a couple of changes we're looking to kind of make in here. Um, so I'm going to just forward a slide there, Bob. So this um. Table looks at. The current and proposed raw water requirement and cash and low equivalent for. I kind of sit separate out like a single family indoor only. As you all know, we have many development elements um in the town. That have, that bring their own outdoor irrigation non-coated system. So in that case, developers really only have to pay for that indoor water portion, provide wet water for that indoor water piece. Um, so I've highlighted that and we also have single family. I use the word standard, I typical, you know, just a whole, the whole package. If you're going to do indoor and outdoor um for a single family, single home. Um, also broken down here by multi-family per unit. Um, breakdown and then for commercial and irrigation for all tap sizes at this point. Those are one-off conversations that have to be had with staff to determine. The requirements that your irrigation system, that your commercial development would require, especially as we're currently in the process of the expansion. Um, of both facilities, we have to ensure that we have capacity on both ends of that system. So we can't quite get out of ourselves. That's our opportunity to make sure that we have the capacity to, to service. Um. But I do want to highlight, so we are looking at, um, as you can see in that first column, um. Currently, we are asking for point three-two acre feet. Uh, what goes into that calculation are an assumed gallon per capita per day for a residence and. Uh, uh, a, a catheter home assumption and assumed lot size and assumed. Um, impervious area or like such, we're trying to get an irrigable area, right? So we assume the lot size and we remove the. The house footprint, the driveway footprint, that's how much left to irrigate. We assume an irrigation rate or need. And that's how we come up with that volume of how much water we're asking for, for either indoor or for an entire lot. Um, and we are proposing some changes to that. We have, um. As. Development continues here, there is a, you know, very common is that there is this sort of passive conservation that starts to take place with new development. As plumbing codes become more stringent, as appliance requirements, energy star, um appliances are just more efficient indoor and outdoor, right? Even irrigation systems that go in, we have new irrigation standards that we're rolling out. Um, all of those play into uh, you know, an overall reduction in the volume that's required. Just to a single family home. With the rate study as well, we had some very recent deep dives into our consumption and water use rate. So that also played into uh looking at changing at the gallons of power per day that we're utilizing. Uh, on the flip side, we actually also increased the size of the footprint of a home because we're. On average, they're getting a little bit bigger, I mean a lot, but a little bit. Um. Otherwise, most of the assumptions, irrigation demand stayed the same. Um, but that is fundamentally how that change goes from point three-two acre feet to point two-five. And then a total of point five-eight currently to what we're proposing in point five. Um, multi-family, there is a fraction, that's a point seven. Of, of what we ask for for single family. That is. Based on empirical, our observed data for Wellington, that's also very similar standard kind of across the country as well. Are the use per unit in the whole family situation. Um, I will say then on that cash and lieu equivalent, what comes into play on that. We currently base our cash and new rate. It's tied to the price of a North Cooter irrigation company share. North Cooter is our um predominant avenue for raw water in this region. We're smacked out in the heart of our distribution system. Uh, we're not adjacent to the river. Uh, Box Elder's not going to produce enough water for us to pull off of it. Uh, we actually make the Box Elder's stream downstream of the wastewater tree and plant. So, um. Um, they are our, our. Our number one source besides wells. To get raw water. Alright, so it's been historically, that's how those passion, passion levels have been tied. So there are a couple of changes that I am proposing that we consider. Um, that we would come back to you if you're um. Depending on your dialogue, um, we could come, we would come back in probably December with some proposed changes on this topic. Uh, which would be currently the town in our code allocates. Two point four acre feet per share of North Cooter as the yield that we say. A share will get. What that translates to is that we're asking to move forward to propose. We're asking for point two-five acre feet of water for a home. Divide that into point two-four and that would tell you how many homes you could build on one share of, of North Cooter water if you were to turn it in. Um. We have seen a very significant. We're, we're in the midst of a pretty significant drought, both in Colorado and broader west. Uh, we are seeing a continued decrease in the allocation that North Cooter makes for their multiple use water. We're also already seeing decreases in the allocations that Northern Water is providing for their units of water. And it is my recommendation. For this year, um, that we would reduce that yield per share to two point oh acre feet per share. And it would also be my recommendation that we reduce what we have in our code right now is point seven. Uh, acre feet per CBT unit, Colorado Big Lots and Project Unit, and we also reduce that to point five. Um. And I'm open to questions and consideration for that. Um, I do want to jump down to this next. Slide, which just gives a little bit of an overview of a comparison around if we kind of look at. What all those development fees would mean together. Right? Water tap, sewer tap, raw water costs. Um, looking at a single family. Um, indoor only, a single family standard, and then just sort of a, and these are example calculations just for illustrative purposes. Um, a multi-family unit, let's say fifty units of multi-family development. And kind of what those costs would look like under our current system, and then under what we're proposing. Um, down the line for uh impact fees, raw water costs and cash. Uh, I would love to yield any questions um around. Impact needing for these broader requirement and cash and lieu. I know what your, is a new topic, so I'm curious to get feedback. Um, specifically related to that one about. What you would need to see or what you might like information to have, should we come back to you in December with proposed changes on the topics?
Believe it or not, this stuff is actually really interesting to me. Um. So my concern, I think Megan, you and I kind of discussed this when we met yesterday. Is water is reminded on a regular basis of finite resource. So when we are looking at decreasing the amount of water that we are requiring a developer to bring. Or decreasing the amount of cash and layu, this cash and layu is used for what purpose?
Um, it is um. What a developer can pay to the town, the town is, can accept cash and lieu at our discretion as how code is written. Um, in lieu of wet water. So that, that cost would cover um our cost of going to essentially purchase the same thing.
I'm sorry, I'm like, I'll. Uh, get more detailed with that. What do we use this water for?
Water or money?
The money that comes back to us. So water.
I purchased five shares of North Cooter in early twenty twenty-two. Feels like five years ago. Um, so I, so it, it currently would go towards. Raw water development.
Got it. So purchasing shares of water, whether that be through North Cooter, through a different entity in the future, that water, is it? Only a specific use utilized to purchase water? The cash that comes back?
Raw water development, yes.
Got it. So could this be used, say, to transition water shares from raw water to potable water if we needed to?
So could it pay for water court? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Got it. So I think that's where my concern with this comes in is. When we decrease the costs. Of what's required as far as acre feet and we decrease. The cost of what they need to do in cash and layu. Water being a finite resource, we're saying, don't worry, you don't need to bring as much water. Don't worry, you don't need to pay as much in layu of bringing water to support. What we need. So when, and it's my understanding and looking is one acre foot. Is what they're saying is the requirement per household. When you look at evaporation, you look at what actually. Falls off and doesn't actually cycle back into our system. So if we're supposed to be looking at one acre foot per residence and my understanding is that is the norm. In a lot of our areas because of the drought conditions, because they classify it as a wet ditch. And in drought conditions, it actually dries. And the absorption of water. That ditch wall is going to take more water in, decreasing what we have available to flow downstream. So I, my worry is that we're going to lower the bar for people coming in. And I don't want to end up in a cycle where we take too less money, where we can actually utilize that later on to purchase more shares. They get more expensive. I'm not seeing the cost of water go down any. So that's one of my, my concerns as far as that end goes. Um, I am looking forward to learning a lot more about this. I would love to see the survey that we had done for our town. On this exact subject, to my understanding. Um, I'd love to read it because it was a few years ago now. But I think that would be a great benefit for us to know exactly. What that, that actually looks like. How much do we truly need? For each home here. I don't want to be a town that cannot provide water for its residents during massive drought conditions.
Could you clarify what you're referring to?
Yeah, there was a survey done. Um, Sand Tech, a Sand Tech survey done. Uh. Yes. Done, uh.
Survey or study?
Uh, study. So, but they did an evaluation into looking at how much water we actually had to have. And they did the absorption and the evaporation. Everything from what I understand is in that survey. I haven't seen it. So I just, I haven't read to be educated on it to know what we're exactly looking at. I'll probably have a lot more questions about this as we move forward then.
Can I make just one, can I tie in with one comment on that?
Yeah.
I just want to acknowledge that that, so you're talking about Sand Tech Water Treatment Master Plan that was developed in twenty seventeen. Um, so that's five, six years ago. So that would have been based on information that was prior to twenty fifteen. Um, and just like all things. Today, a lot changes in handful of years. So I just want to acknowledge that. Uh, I also want to acknowledge that. Um, that would have been done prior to the town having any engineering staff. Sand Tech would have been acting as our town engineer at that point. Sand Tech was relieved of those duties as our town engineer at some point. Um, Sand Tech was also in charge of our design effort for our water treatment facility. Sand Tech was eventually relieved of those duties as well and we are now a J D. So. There's probably a long history. It all happened before I was here. That's just a summary of the things that I know related to. That effort. So grain of salt, I guess.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
One thing I'd like to see if we could, and that I know every community is a little different out there. Uh, but I'd like to see how we can compare with the different communities in our area. And uh, we'll see if we're right in line, if we're giving away. Everything or, or how it is. So I think it'll, it'd be good for us to know. I mean, this is going to be such a big learning curve for us. And we, none of us, I don't think are water experts, so the more that we can get, the better. And seeing what the other uh townships and cities are using, that would be beneficent to you.
I would first look forward to use current and recent information when making decisions relative for our. I would affirm Megan's uh story at Bergen Sand Tech and I would. Um, advise that not follow um that data. It costs us a lot of money for the water treatment plant, not having accurate information. Is not good. So I would do. I would be curious to know information that's relevant today and it has evolved a lot, the community's grown a lot on that impact, that shrinkage. Um, that you're mentioning there as we keep. So thank you so much for your hard work on this. I look forward to hearing more about. Comparable fee rates.
Thank you. Trustee Mason.
Yeah, I, I generally agree with uh trustee vegan and uh trustee McDonald. Mayor Fots and McDonald, uh, as, as far as, you know, kind of understanding what the other communities are doing in this regard and. Uh, yeah, I mean, I do share trustees teach concerns when it comes to, you know. Maybe we don't want to be lowering some of these if, if, if that's not appropriate to do so.
Trustee do. Yeah, right now.
Yeah. Right, um. What I'm seeing with these themes. And I really. Appreciate some of the proposed changes. Um. Primarily because uh, what, what's interest. Trustee vegan, I can always trust you to say. What are the communities doing? Um, and we had a really cool presentation by Darren State Homes who came in once. Um, and I can't remember if it was when I was planning to share that it was in front of the board, but. Uh, he essentially brought a breakdown of all the impact fees and, and costs from his developer perspective for all the surrounding or any other community. Um, and, and during that presentation, and they're so complex, you can't compare one against the other. So. But in that presentation, it's essentially the highest, if I remember correctly. And, and during that presentation, and they're so complex, you can't compare one against the other. So, but in that presentation, that's essentially the highest, if I remember correctly, already. Um, and then that was when we were proposing increasing at that time and having said increases yearly from there on out with those impact fees. So that would be something that would be really insightful to watch, I think, if we could track that down. So I just remember that just now, and it was, it was a very eye opening for me to see from his perspective, you know, somebody who's really invested in our community and, and kids here and everything like that. It was really interesting to see his perspective of can I do business in Wellington anymore or not? So, um, that was great. And they've been long-term partners in their planning department. So one thing I do want to acknowledge as well with the term terminology that we're using right now, this does relate to impact fees within fall under the multifamily definition within planning links code, not necessarily within the top determination of multifamily that we've been referring to. I just want to make sure that's correct.
So when, when the utility talks about multifamily, it is going to be distinctly only those, those units that fall behind a single leader.
Okay.
And so, and that is a distinction that things that we can bring up in our work session when he asked what this may sound like, so the question was what qualifies as multifamily? This is a conversation that gets had internally a lot.
Sure.
Uh, so it's definitely not a silly question at all.
Yeah.
Um, so it is a different definition, unfortunately. Um, but it is a different definition for the utilities than it is for land.
Okay. All right. Since it was, so that's the question I have concerning impact fees are generally signed by, you know, more land use type purposes than that. So I, I'm just curious one more about that. So that's the question I did hide. And then, um, the other, uh, topic I've never heard before, and this, this makes a lot of sense, is that we would have less yield per share going forward. That's something I never considered. So it's a big determination, I think. Also, I know that we work, and because of our water situation in sources, we don't fall under a lot of maybe forecasting models of water prices that we would look at nationwide across Colorado, across anything, because we really rely on the one organization. But the point I want to bring up, and to be cautious for in lieu dollars, is that essentially we have the, um, the challenge, right? So if we were to and from my understanding, are always our preference is to take water, right? That's always our preference. But if we were to take in lieu, like cash and lieu, um, the idea is that we would be taking in the money that we would then use to buy water share. But those water shares are not readily available. So we buy them when we could. How long will that take? And what will the price be of that water at that time? So, um, and I know there's been a lot in the past that gone, have gone into that calculation of how much does the share cost right now? How much will it cost in two years?
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but that money can be used for anything within raw water production, not necessarily a share.
It's a nuanced question. So there, it would be not necessarily a share of North Pooter, correct?
Okay.
It could be, um, developing, um, wells. It could be developing our ability to utilize additional.
Raw water.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, raw water development.
Exactly. Um, I did want to clarify, I don't know, I think I missed something that you said.
Okay.
You had mentioned cash and lieu. So development currently, they're required, they're required to bring shares. We do have the opportunity to allow them to pay cash and lieu. They don't really have that option unless, so we have the option to let them.
Right.
Otherwise, they have to bring wet water.
The preference was not correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it requires to, unless we make an exception. So, um, so the only thing I want to consider, and in my mind, it is kind of one for one, because they're either bringing a share or the amount of shares as required by the calculation, or then that money is then used to, you know, in replace of that my share. So to me, that's kind of a one-on-one relationship. I know it can be used for other purposes. But generally speaking, we're talking about a percentage of that share based off the yield, based off of the usage for each household. So that original dollar amount matters, right? And I know a lot of considerations gone into that calculation of what that dollar amount is now, what it will be when we buy it potential in the future, how long that might take, when will it be available? So many variables here. So a lot of consideration. What I do appreciate is that, like our water rates, we're applying equity. We're trying to be equitable regarding the, the speeds. So if we really have a better understanding now of how much each household, whether or not it's in different classes, how much they actually use, and we're then not using maybe this recommendation and charging them for more than we know and have studied that they would be using, that's not fair, right? So, um, using the amount that we've studied and gone to the point of this, they use lesser, so why would we charge them for more? And the reason why this is important is because that's not just the developer fee. The developer doesn't just pay this money and eat it if it costs more or less, right? That's a fee that's then passed down to each buyer of each home, each renter of each home, each renter of each apartment and multifamily thing. So if we were doing this to say, pay your share, and we're charging the correct amount based on what we actually expect you to be using or require, that's more fair. So if you double the use doesn't cost doubly amount in this case, I, I think it makes sense with the recommended model. Of course, I would love to hear more from other folks, but there are so many assumptions here and variables. So if we have to do our best though, if we have data that says they don't use as much as we're charging them, I think we use that. It would be unfair for us to say, no, we'll just keep charging for, just in case. So I, I have two sides of that. I want to make sure we have enough money to buy the shares whenever they might be available. I also want to make sure that we're not charging people more than we know that they need. So those two.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to agree. I think trustee Julie made a lot of really good points about returning things appropriately as they are. Um, the primary concern that I have has been shared by everyone else is just um, you've seen the prices fluctuate from the two years I've been on the board for our stock up and it's gone really high and then it dropped down a little tiny bit, and then I think it's gone back up again. Um, but it has not trended down over the last decade. It's gone up by thousands of persons or something. Um, so obviously I don't see that. The major concern, and you mentioned lot size changes, just buildings have gotten more efficient. And the question I have is, we're talking about roughly a twenty-two percent decrease for the indoor raw water requirement. This is the pricing, just saying, we only need percentage twenty-two percent decrease plus a fourteen percent in decrease in outdoor water uses what being proposed. Have we seen a decrease of that amount of water coming out? Because all the numbers I see coming from public work says that we're seeing steady or increasing water demand on the system. So my question is, are we truly seeing a twenty-two percent and a fourteen percent decrease in those areas and then also taking that into account? And I don't understand exactly how shrinkage is the right word to use, but as you're saying, we're looking at decreasing the amount of water we're going to see from shares. So it's concerning that we're talking about a twenty-two percent to fourteen percent decrease, and then also seeing we're going to get less water out of the share.
So the, well, it's time to pull up a secret slide.
So, and this is maybe better for us to have been a separate meeting where we can go in on this. That would be helpful to understand, again, if it makes sense, like you said, and we truly are, that's what we should be charging. I don't have a problem with it. It just from looking where we were, where we weren't charging enough, and then trying to get it right sized, and then it's so for me to say, I thought we were somewhat close. So if we were truly up by twenty-two percent from profit, so um, I would just, it would be good to be able to actually see how we got there, especially thinking into account, as you mentioned, potentially seeing less water going forward. And I think what was presented to us before with the cash and lieu, if that's going to be provided as an option in some cases, is how are we calculating that? And because before they showed us like, here's how it works with the, you know, current price, and then looking at how it might change over years, if we can just see what that looks like as well. And I think that would be helpful to make sure that we have the inspiration to make this.
Quick comment on, on something you said, I think it's worth mentioning. So when we're talking about increased usage and volume, that also relates to incredibly growing communities. So not necessarily more volume per household, but more volume overall because of there's more. I do want to acknowledge that. So it's not necessarily we're just, everyone's using more water. It's that we just have so many work.
No, absolutely. I understand. We've had, you know, about a hundred homes the last couple of years of growth. So it's just, that's why I'd like to understand how you got there. We got there and it's right number. I could with it. It's just from what I have seen, I have a hard time understanding that we've seen that large decrease in the last couple of years in our use, or we're just that far off. So if we can understand how we got those decreases, that would be helpful.
Thank you for putting this together. Um, I mean, I know from friends that are in the industry, I've seen a up and coming trend, a current trend with developers where they're looking at making smaller lots, smaller homes as a whole. But kind of decrease in the landscape, at least in Colorado, northern Colorado as well. So you're seeing less water usage there right off the bat. Just like you said, with the upgraded appliances, things of that nature, all that comes into play. So this is more or less for what we have known for the new homes coming in, which will inevitably be using less water than say my home that was built in nineteen twenty-one. So, I mean, if this to me makes sense, but going with the concerns of the board, yes, I think it'd be wise to look at other municipalities, areas in the region. How do we compare it? Um, make sure, you know, we are not undercharging by means of doing things still, however we need to be proactive. I trust your calculations. I just want to be able to have something to look at so I can understand it better when it comes to the shares. Um, I would love more information on that, um, a separate presentation, maybe specifically on that. Um, they are rather intricate, and I think routine is smart for us all. You have this being well educated on how to see the theme and all of that works. Yeah. So I, I, I would like to see this come back personally, a little more refined, a little more information, where we can spend just some more time on it ourselves, kind of tune it up and see where we end up. Uh, any other questions for the trustees at this point? Now it is open to public comment.
Thank you.
Everybody needs to show a button down to member of the water sewer roundtable. Just hesitating to note as well as everything that's being said. So little clarification from our standpoint, um, now we will let you know when I'm only thinking of them. In terms of our priorities and the way that they were listed in the memo, I don't really remember, but I think it's important to note that customer impact, not because we don't care, we're all customers, is our lowest priority of the four priorities. And we did that, pretty much why we did it in the first meeting. There was no numbers, there was no information. It was literally setting priorities. Affordability, tax relating that first three thousand gallons, we didn't know what that was at the time, but that was our number one priority. Affordability is the biggest issue, I think, everybody that lives in Colorado, that's the number one. As far as option three goes, um, I did step out and make a call to one roundtable member who isn't here, just to clarify. Um, the feeding end, that was something that was discussed. I have ten minutes. It was brought up during the roundtable. Um, there was one member who was for that. Um, the conversation quickly ended um, because it was more important to us as one of our higher priorities, the equitable share across classes and things of that nature, and new versus current and existing. Um, and as far as businesses not being represented, I think it's important to point out that there was a business member on our roundtable. For whatever reason, I'm not laying blame, but they chose not to fully participate. And so there wasn't an effort from business class to be involved. They just weren't available. And I'll reiterate what I said at our work session, which was that I would encourage you to reach out to those businesses that would be adversely affected. I know I've talked to a couple of myself already and have them to reach out to public works. Um, and the irrigation is where you're going to see a huge impact, and I would encourage um, this board to perhaps look into budget billing, you know, with my gas bill. It's killer in the wintertime, and then I get credits in the summer, and I switched to budget billing, and that actually really changed things for my family. Um, and yet you're still getting that cost recovery, right? And to clarify, we chose the three thousand gallons and the two thousand gallons because it captured almost half of the residents. And again, that affordability pays with our number one priority. And I think it's important also to clarify that bathing is the same as having cost recovery differences between residential and multifamily. Right? Um, I think you had, uh, trustee daily had asked about, um, having different breakdowns depending on the commercial customer type. And I think that's a little bit different than bathing, but I don't want customers or commercial customers to think that as a roundtable, we weren't concerned. We just we need to rip this band-aid off. Losing money is something that Wellington is good at, and I think we need to stop doing that. So
It was good.
It was. It was good. We were good at that. Um, anyway, but anyway, I can talk for another five minutes. Um, I just wanted to make sure we had those clarifications.
Um, I swear we did not collaborate on this. But, um, one of the things that I was also going to say was, you know, the turn of phase in, that you could actually do a hundred percent within a year and still consider bathing in the way that you organize the payments, balance billing, things like that. So there are ways to kind of solve that blow. Um, but it would have to be on a if I can basis. I don't have words in the phrase. I don't own a business. Um, but also on the commercial thing, would be eighty-five percent on, on the wastewater. I was just wondering if there would be an opportunity, um, for companies to find data and water, a specific part of the product, to be able to show how many products were, um, produced, you know, and, and how much of the water was actually used in that? And to be able to publicly provide a quarterly report to maybe get credit towards their, that, um, specific wastewater fee. Um, also on the final point with the twenty-fourteen percent decrease, you know, that we're referring to, um, I was wondering how many years, um, were looked back, you know, what was the look back window in calculating that, you know, to become, you know, to get to that number? Um, kind of like, are we apples to apples, or are we going from oranges to tangerines to, you know, some other sort of situation? So I, I'm really would be interested in getting more information like, like the mayor has requested, um, on that because, uh, you can always do it a year later to things like, you know, how secure are you with the data today to make that decision compared to maybe putting it off a year to make sure that you have enough data that, um, that really backs up those, those numbers. And I'm not saying anything against the numbers. I haven't seen the numbers. I'm just I, it just worries me a little bit. Um, but I'm sure, you know, the town.
Hi y'all. Kent Allen was water representative person. Hey, I'm going to talk a bit about the water. And the little, the things that have about, that have tainted it. It's really spoiled the roundtable experience, guys. You know, the survey, this miscommunication, the nuances. Um, it's really shining a bad light in residents of what they're seeing going on, the residents, what's going on. It's really making us look bad, guys. We need to get our shit together. I'm sorry. Uh, want to point out another thing on as far as grabbing water. All of the towns around here are grabbing as much water as they can. What we're important is done. We need to be doing the same, else we're not going to have water for the future. We decrease what we're going to charge our builders, so our builders can build more, which means now we need more water, but we don't have water. But let's just be cognizant and grab as much water. Then one last point, I want to point out some hypocrisy. I saw this meeting tonight. Uh, Sherelle trustee Pete's had talked about a study that was done in two thousand seventeen, and she was quickly slapped down for a better term, or oh, that's an old one. But trustee daily comes up and say, hey, let's use an old report from Darren Roberston. You know, that, that's a little, little hypocritical. If we're going to use an old report from one person, use an old report from all. Let's just not point and pick and admit it. It just shows how much dysfunction still is in this order. Thanks.
Thank you. Hi Karen, I'm from the mall. Um, so I'm really happy to hear some board members say that they value, more value in option one. I value that one as well, um. I don't know how to say this correctly. At the wrong time. Sorry, um, we're trying. Sorry, I'm nervous. So what I see here is, um, if we were looking at options two and three, those do not make everyone have the same. And I'm not really good at picking either equitable or equal, but equitable, thank you. That would not make it inequitable. And I went to the work session that you all had with um, the town employees about the water situation. And I specifically remember a member of the water roundtable pointing out um, that when they were going through these numbers and things, they were seeing the homes and residential paying a certain amount. And then they would see a bill for a business for five dollars. And that person on the roundtable was outraged by that and shocked by that. And quite frankly, I think everybody should be shocked by that. And when that happened, then a member of the town staff said, oh, I think we have to be careful about how much we say about that. Um, and it wasn't for very long. But it was for very long. It was for eight months. And that may not seem like very long to many people, but as a resident, as a mother and as a family, that eight months that we had to carry more of the businesses bill, that made a huge impact on my family. It made an impact on how much food we could buy, it made an impact on how much we can get done with our vehicles or oil changes. It impacts every single part of it. And so when I look at this option three and they're wanting to delay for two years for the businesses, that makes no big sense to me. That kind of allowance was not made to the town of Wellington residents. And when that happened, it was very abrupt of, well, we're going to do this, I know it sucks, but you're going to have to go through it. Well, I just like to say, the town of Wellington businesses, this party just sucks. But they have to go through it too. And I heard it say earlier that we didn't have very many small businesses. But there's multi-generational businesses that are small businesses here. They've been hunted down from generation to generation. Our auction is one of them, our petri is one of them. There's other businesses that have been here that whole time. Um, so I don't think it's fair to say that we didn't have those before.
Good evening, my name is Joe James Raymond. Couple buzzwords that I picked up here listening, we strange system, I've heard that numerous times, uh, reference to the water plant. And the waste water. Ask questions, I've heard that quite a bit. So the question I'm going to ask is why do we continue to build if we have a strange water system? Uh, we continue, I think you folks were group tops. It's what the town leaders, I could be wrong, but we continue to build, pulling out a strange system. And uh, I look at the map over here, I see all green, I would imagine that's green open space. Or the irrigation for the parks and stuff, where does the water come from? Does that come from Fox, Fox Elder? Or does it come from treatment plants, things like that? Uh, we talked about the new standards on the new construction moving forward, we use left four. But some of these people, if you relate that to like a car, you got a nineteen sixty car, you get nine miles to the gallon, they still drive because they can't afford to do anything different, right? So no one's going to move up your house and move somewhere else. Talked about affordable housing to come into the front range. And I think that one of the speakers before being mentioned, we can't even afford to live what we have here. But for what we have here, right? So, um, it is, it's, and I'm sure all you folks live here as residents also, but it's extremely tough on us. And I don't, I don't know, do you know how many people are online watching us right now?
We might fail to tell you, needs to be how many people are on, Adrian.
And there's how many people in Wellington?
There's twenty-three.
There's twenty-three online, how many residents do we have in Wellington? And we have how many people turned up for the meeting here? Twenty? So what does that tell you from your residents in the town? They're tired of this shit. Right? Nobody listens to them. That's my take on it. And uh, one more thing, a man went out his taxes, another guy with a kid. And I don't have all the facts here, but my opinion is you guys have a problem here. And you're trying to address it, but you can't address it if you're going to continue to build. Finish your inner structure. Get that dialed in. Then do all your studies. Get all your information, get your facts, don't assume. I've heard that word quite a few this evening. Don't assume, know what you're working with. Work with the tools that you have. Put this behind us. Give us a community, we'll be proud of you. You know, not even fifty, we need people for a very, very important subject. Okay, that's a slap in the face. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees, I apologize, I ran here, so I might be a little bit out of breath. Um, I just want to say that I day in and day out work for affordability for um, the average person. And for people making between thirty and eighty percent of the average median income, which actually covers the essential workers, CNNs, everyone, firefighters, you name it. And so being a part of this roundtable was important to me because I felt like it was an opportunity to really speak to how we can make life manageable for the average person. And so I am absolutely in favor of option number one, which covers essential costs. Or as you saw, almost fifty percent of the residents in the town. But more importantly, I also was in favor of phasing. And so I am that person who Lisa Sherey was talking about five minutes ago before I have to my car came here. Because it is important to me to recognize that our decisions make an impact on everyone. And so if we can ease that burden and we can take some of the pain away, that's what we need to do as a town. And so I am absolutely in favor of the budget billing. I would really encourage everyone to look at that because it's a way to make that manageable for everyone. And especially those that will be most impacted. I also would like to say, because I missed the beginning comments. That I believe if we all keep the best interest of everyone in our town in mind and stay positive and look at how we can help one another versus how we can bring up conflicts and and divisions, that we would be so much better. Because I look at each one of you here, and I can say that, each one of you. And I know that you really do care. And you really have the best interest in mind. And so I just ask you to consider that for each class during this moment and to ask for more data, if that's what you need. But to consider your affordability for each and every resident and business owner, and yes, look at them in the past. Because we do want businesses to come here. We absolutely need them. And we are a lucky county and we are somewhere that people want to come. And they want to be, and they want to have their business. And we want to be out in the community together. So figure out a way to make that happen for all of us, please.
The team leader, I am also in favor of phasing in. I think we should phase in the residents, seventy-five percent the first year, a hundred percent the second year because we have paid the most over the past two years. We have bared the burden of the businesses, businesses that have already had its year reprieved. Businesses have not paid their share of the cost of recovery for two years. Even though their weight, their rate went up recently, it didn't cover enough of their costs. Businesses have been getting the preferential treatment over the residents for two years now. And now you want to give them another year of preferential treatment. I say, get it to the residents.
Bring back to the board for discussion. Can we take a quick recess? Five minutes. I now call the October twenty fifth, twenty twenty three meeting back in session, time leaning page thirty-seven P M. Uh, back where we were, um, for discussion for basically at this point, staff and representatives provide directions for restructuring, creating ordinance for three. Obviously, the first termination for the cost service model may be made, that's going to be on page twenty-eight of the packet, slide four. I believe we have these slides in front of us printed out. Number one is going to be the cost of service changes are implemented in full for all customer classes beginning twenty twenty-three. The initial recommendation was to then I'll ask for a fourth session, so that would be one of the roundtable recommended, the one that we had all discussed. I feel like the majority of us here are on board with that. Second one is the cost of service change will be transitioned for all customer classes for a series of proportional adjustments over the next five years. Um, those rates would not reflect only equitable cost. Um, recovery between classes until twenty point seven. And then we have three, the cost of service changes for whether classes are implemented in full beginning in twenty twenty-three. The cost of service changes for commercial and irrigation would be implemented at a seventy-five in twenty twenty-three. And a one hundred percent. So that was something that did happen for residential rates is they were based in to not have an initial shock. Essentially, when we first did it, um.
Six months, six months.
Yeah, it was recorded, I think, um, and it was done during the, uh, not irrigation seasons. So that first one, honestly, besides people who are very engaged, wasn't significantly as much as the second one, like, which was a, a smaller increase the second time. Which was where a lot of outrage came, though, at the time we made those changes, we did the best with the knowledge that we had and the pressure that we had in order to reach our, um, our goals. And it was. Not the best solution, that's why we did better, that's why we hired professionals to have the study to engage with the roundtable. So I think we're doing a lot better this time for sure. Um, two things that I think that I heard of during public comment, I think that we cannot let go of. Um, one of them was mentioned by, uh, Mayor Trop, uh, pretend McDonald is. If we are indeed going to be. Providing a shock, whether it's. Reserved or not, and I, we have all those questions, but everybody paid their own way, it will still be a shock to some of those users who will have a significant increase immediately on their bills. We should have a program similar to what we did for residents that would help them with two months of their water and sewer rates. That's how we calculated it for residents. So we are going to do the same thing, and we're going to shock with new grades. We should consider that same method to be equitable for two months of assistance for. Any hardships, um, in order to pay those increased bills. I think that would be the fair solution if we were trying to be fair, um, when we increase residential rates. That's how we assisted to help those who would struggle with that increase. So that's one consideration. The other one was for sewer rates for people who sell water, essentially, they will not be using sewer as much as other businesses would. Um, an idea of being able to get a credit or something to prove that they're not using sewer, uh, to a certain extent, maybe. I think that's something to look into. I think that makes a lot of sense. How logistically that would occur, no idea, and that seems very complicated, but, uh, something I don't want to lose traffic. Okay, so, uh, with, with those two things, I'm in favor of scenario three, although I understand scenario one and that's close second to me. Um, option one for re- uh, residential and multifamily. Um, option four for commercial.
Scenario one, option four.
All of them scenario three.
Oh, okay.
All of them scenario three, option one, one, four. One, 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 four, one.
Very.
Cause I don't know if everybody commented on that, but one, one, four, one. Residential multifamily, commercial irrigation. Scenario three, but I fully understand scenario one. I think having alternate options available, um, for discussion for these. In the ordinance perspective would be helpful when we're bringing that into our residents and business on there, so they can see the alternate, um, ordinance.
What was? The last request, what was your last?
That we had.
Curiously taking that.
Alternate, um, alternate, uh, ordinances drafted, so when we did bring this up for action, that there would be. Option A or B, I know we have one, two scenario, one, two, three, but at that point, I think we're narrowing that down significantly from this discussion scenario. I think that we should still provide options. I don't think it should, we shouldn't bring it and be like, this is what we're voting. I think it's important to say we're considering all the options that are brought in front of us. These are the two that were considered or liked by our board, and then we could bring both those ordinances. So I don't know, I think that's a consideration to make sure that we're acknowledging.
Thank you. Circle that.
Lots of tables and lots of personal ones. I also like continuity of brief. Um, for residential, like option one, and. Irrigation and the option for, for the commercial.
Uh.
The cost, the cost of service, sorry.
Scenario, uh, you see, but to be going with the option for, no, 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 like on the cost of service scenario, we have the phasing, so there was one, two, and three to juice, I didn't.
There was the option one that this.
There are one option for.
Perfect.
Oh. Trust me, we can.
Option one. There's one, option one, version, whatever.
Scenario one, one for residential.
Right.
And you have the four on this.
Okay, we're perfect. Number ten.
Oh.
That's.
I'm taking a lot in, like.
How I'm around now.
Uh, yeah, so I would be a fan, a fan of a process service scenario one. Again, I don't, I don't think a decent approach is appropriate here. If the town staff has the ability to look at the budget billing, uh, for some of these, uh, you know, you know, customers that need, need that. Um, I think that's totally appropriate, but I would be a fan of cost of service scenario one, uh, as well as option one for residential and option one for commercial. But I look at option four, uh, the thing that I see there is that the, the option one in the first tier is zero to twenty five thousand gallons. I'm assuming that our small businesses, something like this, or something like that, are going to be obviously using quite a bit less than twenty five thousand gallons a month. And that cost, uh, is eleven seventy two per thousand, whereas option four is actually twelve twenty two per thousand. So I actually think that option one would be a more appropriate for a smaller business. They're actually going to pay less on that. So, um, I would go with option one as far as the margin goes.
Thank you. Trust me, dude.
Um, everything I think that you said, roughly, could make sense for small businesses, I think option four is actually more applicable to large waters. Um, and, and what I see is the method that was created is essentially saying encouraging anybody to use less water than the years, year before. And then I would assume that that would be recalculated on a yearly basis, so they would have a new average, maybe use less the next year, um, so I guess I'm. A goal, I'm sure. Um, okay, so I, uh, no, it hasn't been mentioned yet, but for scenario three, um, including the shortest term phase and approach essentially of, of how I've painted it. Um, I do want to remind the group that residential rates were based in. So that was something that did happen for residential rates is they were based in to not have an initial shock. Essentially, when we first did it, um.
Six months, six months.
Three months. Yeah, it was recorded, I think, um, and it was done during the, uh, not irrigation seasons. So that first one, honestly, besides people who are very engaged, wasn't significantly as much as the second one, like, which was a, a smaller increase the second time. Which was where a lot of outrage came, though, at the time we made those changes, we did the best with the knowledge that we had and the pressure that we had in order to reach our, um, our goals. And it was. Not the best solution, that's why we did better, that's why we hired professionals to have the study to engage with the roundtable. So I think we're doing a lot better this time for sure. Um, two things that I think that I heard of during public comment, I think that we cannot let go of. Um, one of them was mentioned by, uh, Mayor Trop, uh, pretend McDonald is. If we are indeed going to be. Providing a shock, whether it's. Reserved or not, and I, we have all those questions, but everybody paid their own way, it will still be a shock to some of those users who will have a significant increase immediately on their bills. We should have a program similar to what we did for residents that would help them with two months of their water and sewer rates. That's how we calculated it for residents. So we are going to do the same thing, and we're going to shock with new grades. We should consider that same method to be equitable for two months of assistance for, um, any hardships. Um, in order to pay those increased bills, I think that would be the fair solution if we were trying to be fair, um, when we increased residential rates. That's how we assisted to help those who would struggle with that increase. So that's one consideration. The other one was for sewer rates for people who sell water, essentially, they will not be using sewer as much as other businesses would. Um, an idea of being able to get a credit or something to prove that they're not using sewer, uh, to a certain extent, maybe. I think that's something to look into. I think that makes a lot of sense. How logistically that would occur, no idea, and that seems very complicated, but, uh, something I don't want to lose traffic. Okay, so, uh, but with those two things, I'm in favor of scenario three, although I understand scenario one and that's close second to me. Um, option one for re- uh, residential and multifamily. Um, option four for commercial.
Scenario one, option four.
All of them scenario three.
Oh, okay.
All of them scenario three, option one, one, four. One, 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 four, one.
Very.
Cause I don't know if everybody commented on that, but one, one, four, one. Residential multifamily, commercial irrigation. Scenario three, but I fully understand scenario one. I think having alternate options available, um, for discussion for these. In the ordinance perspective would be helpful when we're bringing that into our residents and business on there, so they can see the alternate, um, ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the last request, what was your last?
That we had.
Curiously taking that.
Alternate, um, alternate, uh, ordinances drafted, so when we did bring this up for action, that there would be. Option A or B, I know we have one, two scenario, one, two, three, but at that point, I think we're narrowing that down significantly from this discussion scenario. I think that we should still provide options. I don't think it should, we shouldn't bring it and be like, this is what we're voting. I think it's important to say we're considering all the options that are brought in front of us. These are the two that were considered or liked by our board, and then we could bring both those ordinances. So I don't know, I think that's a consideration to make sure that we're acknowledging.
Thank you. Circle that.
Lots of tables and lots of personal ones. I also like continuity of brief. Um, for residential, like option one, and for commercial, I like option four. My touchy, don't know. I agree.
I like scenario one, option one for residential multifamily. Um. And I don't know what else I'm thinking, I think that's, and then also, um, scenario one, option four for commercial irrigation. I think budget billing would be a great way to look into some way of, so things. And even billing for those commercial rates that may see a great increase. Um, I know we're, most of those increases for those larger users than least irrigation ones are going to be needed in the off season, so they will have time to prepare, I believe. Um, but yeah, that's my stance, that's what I think, um, I do not think it is a bad idea to have. Some sort of different ordinance options. When we get to this point, actually implementing this and having a larger public. Amen. So, that's probably, Ms. Garcia.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to kind of go through these, so for trustee Gator, I have cost of service one, option one. Um, cost of service option one, and then option one for residential, then for commercial, option one or four.
One is my preferred, but I am amenable to the number four.
Okay, and then what about irrigation? There's three.
Uh, so everything is option one except for, Marshall, I'm open.
Perfect, trustee Keys, I have, um, cost of service one, option one for residential, option four for commercial. And which option would you like for irrigation? It's the option one, you want one as well, okay, trustee McDonald.
But if it squares it away where we only have two options, then I'm fine with going with the option one. Um, the cost of service scenario one and option one on all.
Okay, so for commercial, okay. Okay, understood, one or four, thank you, hold on, making my notes. Um, Mayor Proton McDonald, cost of service option three, option one for residential, option four for commercial, and what option for irrigation? Cost of service option three, option one for residential, option four for commercial, and what option for irrigation? Perfect, trustee Mason. Cost of service option one, then option one for residential, option one for commercial, and what would you like for irrigation?
Option one on irrigation.
Perfect, trustee Daly, uh, cost of service option three, option one for residential, option four for commercial, and option three for irrigation.
Option one, irrigation.
Okay, thank you, that's why we're going through this. Um, Mayor Chelsea. Cost of service option one, then option one for residential, option four for commercial, and what would you like for irrigation?
Option one, please.
Okay.
You forgot David.
Trust me, again, thank you.
Can I have a clarification real quick? Uh, option four on the commercial compared to option one, looking at it a little closer. Is option four that save the low-use people more at that point?
Um. Not really.
No, after looking at it again, it almost looks like there's a vote, sure, there are, yeah.
Yeah, it would be, um, the, the biggest difference between option one and option four for commercial is that. Option four will alleviate some of that highest use burden and allow some of that ability for the highest commercial user.
Okay, so would you add some impact on the higher use?
We are looking for, this is really strange with commercial users, so, I don't know, we'll start throwing out some statistics terms here, I know a couple of you are going to, right on to them, maybe not everybody, but. The median value, the median consumption in year twenty twenty one for all hundred and whatever commercial users was four thousand gallons, right? The median. But we have some users that have used them per monthly, that have used over three hundred thousand gallons a month, right? So like, way off the other end of the spectrum. Um, so, you know, that average is like nineteen thousand gallons, so you can tell that that, you know, those higher users really swing that average way up. But, you know, more than fifty percent of our commercial customers are pretty low-water users. And similar to the rate structures that we provided for residential, all of these rate structures would provide a decrease to those commercial customers, those lowest commercial users again.
This would too?
Yeah, any four of those, of all four of them, well.
Okay.
Um, so it's more about that. Teasing out that, if that impact a little bit, if we can, to those largest users, and I, I will say honestly, the uniform rate and the, uh. Individualized rate, I think is the term we use, um. Allows for that a little bit more.
Right.
Is that that option board?
Yeah, the individualized rate is that rate option four for commercial, which does, to go back to reiterate what trustee Gator had mentioned. It does have, it's kind of the only one that has this effect for sort of setting some conservation goals that can be, uh, uh, approachable. The, the difficulty with the tier grade structure for the commercial is that it's sort of that same comment about having a mean that's four thousand, but then you have users that are in excess of a hundred, hundred twenty, two hundred thousand gallons. And that's not typically something you can conserve your way out of, in a lot of cases, it's, it's what it takes to run your business, to manufacture what you're manufacturing, to. You know, that sort of thing, so that, that individualized rate structure does sort of set that baseline of like, okay, here's your average annual use. We know in some, you know, that means some of the months you're, you're below that use, if you're above, that kind of creates that like conservation goal possibility for, um. For those higher users, well, for all users, right?
And, and that's exactly how I'm seeing it. I'm seeing it for the high-water users, giving them more incentive to use less water. That's, that's where I, the other ones have incentives to use more, but this is the one that really has that incentive for, I think, our big water.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's.
Ready.
All right.
One on everything except for the commercial, one for.
So option one residential, option four for commercial. And option one.
Again, I, I, I think I would like to stress with the board that the point that Ms. Smith just made hits the nail on the head, right? The average business is four thousand gallons per year, or, uh, sorry, come on. Um, when you consider, right, that this first tier is zero to twenty five thousand gallons, right? That is going to encompass, what percentage of businesses would you say?
Uh, uh, eighty one percent.
Okay, so again, the, the tier one individual rate is twelve twenty two for option four versus eleven seventy two for option one. For option one, and again, I just, I just would stress if that's going to cover. A large percentage of businesses, that, that would be cheaper for them holding it.
And you also said that uh these rates are probably a little cheaper than what they currently are paying.
All of them will be cheaper than the current rate, right?
For those lowest.
At eighty one percent, well.
So I will take real quickly, so we want to be careful, so the median is not the average. Median is in the middle, right? Average is at nineteen thousand.
Yeah.
So people that are in that range of like two to four thousand will likely, regardless of which one we choose, see a reduction because they're going to be losing that sixty five dollar base rate. And seeing just the, whether it be. The eleven seventy two or twelve, twelve, twenty two, based on whatever they use. So for those that are in that lower rate, they're going to be lower. Now, if you're using the seven to eight thousand gallons, you're probably going to see your rate go up. So it's not necessarily saying all of the average will go below that. Um, but I did also appreciate the point that trustee Mason makes is the cost of service of commercial, that's the whole point of this whole study was. The cost of service for each spot has to be paid for that class, so if we're going to ship some of the burden off of those highest users, if we can do that. We might necessarily have to ship that to the lower users, which is why you see that rate being higher. So really, what, that's what it does, it doesn't say we're going to not recover it, it's just saying either it's going to be recovered more on the high end users. Or more, more of that can be shipped to the low end users, that's kind of the difference between, as I see it, option one. Is a little bit less on the lower end users, but it is have more of that cost recovery on the higher end users, option number four shifts a small amount of that. From the high, I mean, high end users are still paying both of it, but there will be a lesser amount on the high end users, and then some of that will by necessity has to be shipped to those lower. Thank you for that. Everybody, there's one.
I just wanted to verify that I did option one on all of them.
Yes, I'm looking, it's one, one, one or four and one, okay, so. Okay. I think we'll, and we'll come back with two draft um ordinances at the next meeting. Um, for consideration, and we'll put public comment, all that, um, if. We need, if you feel the need to extend it for another meeting, we'll be looking at probably calling a special meeting on November fifteenth. Um, so that to give everyone opportunity, if there's changes that need to be made, or if you wanted, you know, really set. On one, one of the ordinances, we can make sure that we'll have that ready for that special meeting. Absolutely.
Um, now we're gonna go off of base water. Does anybody have any questions? Do you support what is presented? If you have any questions, we can ask. You can back up here. I don't feel like there needs to be a conversation currently, I would like to see, and I'd like trustee Daly's point of looking into. Can we give businesses the option, and maybe it's, you know, they buy a flow meter or something to show, hey, this is all I'm putting down in there. And we, so I would love to have a public work staff look into that and saying, even if we say right now, hey, on the business, if you go do X, Y, and Z. And you can show a ton of wastewater, will it adjust your billing to match that? I would love to see that come back, but other than that, I'm.
No, I feel exactly the same.
Perfect. Okay, go, we're all uh in agreement there. And then uh raw water, I think we're all in agreement, we wanted more information, um. As about shares utilization there. Just more meat on that one. Okay. That, that will all, that's already been captured, we're all, no.
I might have missed it.
What, just you have, um, are you okay?
That's gonna be the, well, no, that would be.
Does the board have any questions or concerns around the recommendation for water and sewer capital investments?
That's slide eighteen.
I apologize, I did not pick that one off.
If the.
Yep, it's, it's this page, it says current proposed water and wastewater capital. Fifteen in the packet, obviously.
I don't currently have.
I'm not sure.
Any questions on that, I mean, this has been done for a conversation on here, yeah, in line with other municipalities. I'm pretty sure we can be high on that. Um, but it also does come down to we have to pay for the extensions that we're doing, there, there, there's no two ways around that. It's either we have development say a portion of that, or we go and raise, raise the current user more, which. Not in favor, so I, I have no issues with it. Thank you.
Okay, so I do have a few questions, we didn't actually ask questions about this in our, when we were going in circles over some of the water stuff. Um, so I did end up looking at a few different municipalities when it came to these fees and charges. And the one that I was questioning, and I'm not sure why, so residential multifamily per unit. Um, that one is set at six thousand eight nineteen. Is there a reason that one's so much lower than the rest of them?
It's set as a, it's set as a function of, of the cost for a single family home. So that's based on that same seventy percent. And on average, what we see for a multifamily development. Is the infrastructure costs related to services, as you're serving a bunch of units behind a single meter. Um, that cost for by that service and the demand it plays in the system, there's that reduction in, in a per unit fee, sorry, so ten. Ten plus, I think ten times. In that, in that situation, yes.
Got it, so and is that high compared to what other municipalities are seeing as far as that goes?
I will be perfectly honest, um, to kind of touch on what trustee Gator just mentioned, it's so very independent. Um, I, I would say yes, on average, uh, our tap fees put us, these increases put us in. Higher than average in our region for sure. Um, we were in a second, you know, we, there was, um, there is a, a table in the presentation that we provided on October fourth. That highlighted where we fell.
Got it, right, okay, and that was the reference that we were looking at, got it.
So it would, I mean, we are relatively high for our tap fees. But to touch on what trustee Gator just mentioned, is a, it's a function of the cost to buy into the system that we have. To provide the service to create capacity for other servers that we provide.
For a smart hundred.
Definitely utilize those larger, for the multifamily units, you're using larger infrastructure to make those demands or make those events.
I, yeah, it depends on the size of the, of the development, which is why there's a, a tie into that. Per unit size.
Got it, and other than that, we're actually, when I look at even Fort Collins, we're running pretty on par. So, and what their costs are compared to what I'm looking at in our tables here. Okay, maybe not the two inch meter, that one possibly is a little larger, so, no, that was. Kind of my questions about it was just that multifamily seems low on the single family unit. But high in general when you look at per unit.
So. Are you good with it?
Yes.
I better believe I'm good for, it looks like that you designed this, so. New construction, new buildings are being programmed, and that's definitely welcome during this conference.
So I'm good with it, um, I think at the whole beginning of this ordeal, we knew that tap fees were going to have to go up, and uh, and. And so I, yeah, I think this is appropriate again, and to trustee Vegan's point. We need to pay our own way on this, I think that's one way to get there, so.
Trustee Daly.
I appreciate the seven percent for the multifamily per unit, I think that is. A little bit more and helping with the horrible, horrible costs for um some of our residents. I also agree that the wastewater tap fee should be based off of the water tap beds. And so I'm glad that we broke it down that way, I think all this makes sense completely, and is more fair. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's great, thank you, appreciate all the work you guys put into this. It's in the process. Uh, okay. Staff, are you good with uh, got any clearer direction from us?
I'm good.
Now we will be moving on to the fee schedule presentation.
Yeah, this will be quick. The town administrator, so this, this fee schedule is something that has been worked on. For at least a year. And just like anything else, I mean, Wellington, it's not, nothing, it doesn't. Day out of my time. All day, so I do apologize. Like anything else in Wellington, um, it doesn't, it's not coming easily, um. Usually you can just look on your, your records and pull up the resolution of the ordinance for something was adopted, and that's not the case. We've taken a lot of searching and a lot of work to find out what, what we currently have adopted. We have fees that we're charging, but what I want is to see what that, was it adopted by a resolution or was it an ordinance? And when wasn't adopted, so like on page one, I can, we're looking at right now, I'm sharing my screen, um. You can see all those were adopted in two thousand eight. I mean, times have changed, cost of service has gone up, this, this, this is. So we do need to look at increasing our fees, but I don't want to do that until I can complete this exercise of going through and making sure that. Um, you know, like our excavation fee, I've yet to find them, I'm searching high and low, but they're, they're gonna show up, I know they're there somewhere. Um, some of the areas that we're looking at, um, so these are. Anything that's highlighted in yellow in your packet is something that is, um, would be a new fee. These, the, the construction inspection fees, those are previously charged by consultants. And now we do all that, and now we can start recovering those fees, so we need to start bringing that, so that would be a new, a new resolution or ordinance. Um, the fee that were adopted by ordinance, we're gonna have to come back and adopt those by ordinance again. Um, we can't change it by resolution, so it's gonna take a little more work. Um, so are we bringing this back too, and um, that may come November eighth, all cleaned up and ready to go, and. Um, some of the fees are being requested to be increased, which makes sense, some of them were adopted even in nineteen ninety four. And really, it's, we need to get these updated, so that we are recovering our costs for doing services, so. Come on, give you a quick update, I don't know if it's a public comment. Since I'm here. I served on the board of adjustments for two years, and so I'm looking at the variance. Um, the variance, uh, well, let me talk about the board of adjustments, um. We met one, maybe twice a year, so we didn't meet very much, and not many residents applied, and I think it has something to do with the cost being a thousand dollars. Um, it's a little much. Um, one, the board of adjustments didn't meet last month, because they didn't have a quorum, and that's just because of the irregular meetings that we have. And it's my assumption is people don't put it on their calendar and save that date. And, and so then we didn't have, we didn't have people come, and I, I don't know why. Um, but I think if we lowered this fee, it would incentivize more people, um, can ask for variance. And help the board of adjustment, uh, members to have a meeting every month, that they can set it in their calendar. Um, so they don't make something else, another obligation, and then not come, and then not have a quorum, and that's very rude to the applicants. So, um, also, the thousand dollars, um, is kind of that barrier. For only rich or, um, businesses can really afford that, and so. Um, the regular citizen, I don't think can afford that. In addition to the project that they're doing, or asking for a variance that costs a thousand dollars, and it's not a guarantee that they're going to get it. But a thousand dollars for maybe I'll get the variance. Most people don't want to do that, so just to be more equitable, so everyone has a shot if they want to do a variance. Um, completely agree that we should cover our costs, I just don't think our costs are a thousand dollars, I could be wrong, um. So I just want, maybe that, if you look that and lowered, so that more people can do it, and the board of adjustments can have more work, because I know that they really want to work more, but they're just not coming their way. Um, and the other one is the business license, uh, the, it doubled from twenty five to fifty, I understand, covering my costs. Um, so I completely agree with covering the costs, I'm a small business owner, a self-employed accountant. And, um, it doesn't break my bank to pay fifty dollars a year. What I think is silly is this is just, um, the privilege of running my business. It, I really don't get a service for this, and so, in the tax. Um, and if we just eliminated it, then we would eliminate the work on our staff, and they wouldn't have to do the paperwork anymore. Um, so, I'm not asking because of this fifty dollars, I'm just asking because of the tax, uh, for the privilege of me making money for my family. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, uh, bring it back to the board.
No, I'm good with this, Patty, keep up the good work, let's make sure we get all this together, and we'll get it passed and, and that, so, yeah, looks good.
Is there any way we could do a two-tiered thing on the board of adjustment? For businesses at a thousand, and for individuals for residential, a lower amount?
I made in my notes to talk to thirty. But we'll, we'll talk about that, I don't know how that amount got provided upon, and, you know, I need to do a little more research of. When we finish that, I'll definitely be, definitely address that, so thank you.
I do have a few things, um, I am also in agreement on the business license, it did double from twenty five to fifty. Um, as far as eliminating, I'm not sure that you can eliminate that because there's background that goes into that. Um, when we as a contractor, we own a business, we submit a packet to complete for the town. They verify our licensure, they verify as they, they do also send reminders, they mail out our business license. They're, they're doing work, um, it might not be work for me specifically, but they are providing a service for our residents. Because we also do not allow people to operate here in town without appropriate licensing, now, whether that happens or not, you can't control it. But at the same time, we're helping protect residents from possibly being taken advantage of by illegal contractors. Or people that are not licensed to do business here, I think that it might not provide me a value. I'm grateful that I get to apply to have a business, but I do know there's work that goes on in the background with that. Um, is it fifty dollars, is it thirty dollars? I don't know how long does it take to do one in the background? I guess that's what I would like to know, is it an hour of staff maintenance, and maybe it's thirty dollars? Kind of what we charge for a core request, like balancing that out. Um, I know Fort Collins and Loveland don't have a charge, so that's also something to look at, I don't know how they don't have a charge. Because it is, that takes that time. Um, the other thing is, is I did have, um. The owner of dumpster divers had seen this packet and reached out to me. And there is a trash hauler's license where one, there was not one before, and two, it's by.
Actually, I found the ordinance adopting it, it was adopted, it's ordinance number fourteen dash one nine nine four. So it was adopted in nineteen ninety four for five hundred dollars, which, and it has a lot of requirements. Um, about submitting. So much information, so that is an area that I need to check in on, because it's not something that we're adhering to right now, and no, we did know. So now we're, I, I learned a lot going through this exercise.
Yes, um, so I do know that Fort Collins and Loveland charges a hundred dollars for that licensure, so it just may be possibly something to look at. As it's often to have people. It's often to have people who hollow away our trash, so that might be something. Um, I do have a lot of items. I would, I'm gonna set up an appointment with Cody as far as like the building side of things. Um, why the variance issue is a big thing at a thousand dollars is because that shift to start. That does not include after your variance is approved, where you now are paying for your building permit, any paper square footage on that building permit. There is a lot of additional costs that go into it, and if I'm building a five hundred dollar storage shed to put on the side of my property, and I'm paying a thousand dollars to say I want it five foot closer to my house. That's possibly why we're not seeing people apply for this, but at the same time, it limits what a person can do with their private property. So I, yes, I agree that we have to pay for this back time, but at the same time, a thousand dollars, I feel is excessive. And maybe readdressing that one. Um, but the rest of it, I will meet with Cody on, because a lot of it is the building side of things and just getting possible feedback on. On items. The last one I had was um special event fees, so application fee for a special um special event is the twenty five dollars. And that's an annual vendor fee of twenty five dollars. Well, when we look at it, if, did you maybe Patty clarify on if they also have to pay for a business license here in town?
I could not find that out today, and I do apologize. It's on my list. I'm gonna check that.
Got it. So if you're looking at charging fifty dollars in a business license for a vendor to participate. And then we're gonna charge an additional twenty five dollars for them as an annual vendor. Now, if this is a food truck. They pay thousands of dollars already. Just to be licensed through fire department, safety, wealth, health checks, the health department. I don't know. We're already getting them with the business license. Do we need an actual vendor fee on top of? What they're already paying in a business licensure? Or do we make it to twenty five and not require them to get the business licensure? So that, those are kind of my questions is just making sure we're not overfeeling, where we're discouraging people from not coming to our area.
Well, that's, that's been, that's been part of this process is figuring out what are we charging? Why are we charging? When was the last time we updated it? I did reuse the business licensing, which can make it a fact, and I did reuse that back down to the twenty five dollars. We are looking at seeing what, you know, other. Other municipalities of our size, what they charge for their business licenses, so that we have an idea of what would be equitable for the town, because we haven't updated that.
Awesome. Perfect. No, other than that, I have, I tried to go through the ordinances as well, looking for these. It's, it's extremely difficult, so, yeah, I tried, I tried. I was gonna help and email what I found, but I didn't find a lot.
Yeah, so I think that I appreciate finally seeing it. I've been with you the whole way, waiting for this document. It was nice, but luckily it's something. Um, so I appreciate that I do appreciate working, doing, having, working since then there, so we can actually see, again, within the ordinance, but no matter what we like or not now. We can look at changing or adopting a new ordinance, but it's been an ordinance, maybe following ordinances. Um, so I look forward to getting this all put together. Um, sounds like you're already gonna be working with staff. I would agree that with the board of adjustments. I would say some level of looking at the proportion of the projects, you know, if it's Jeff who accidentally didn't realize he built his shed. His five hundred dollar shed one foot too close to his house. Versus, you know, hey, I'm opening a business that's gonna generate hundreds of thousands of dollars. There's a lot of discrepancy there to the thousand dollars, if we can find some way to. Proportion that to what is being brought there, because.
Make it equitable?
Make it equitable, right? I think that would be helpful, because obviously, it's like, you know. The staff time is not gonna be that much staff time looking into work, gotta shed that one foot off versus my, you know, million dollar construction project. Okay, that's gonna take a lot of time and going through stuff and processing, so. I would like to see that come back, and I agree, I I wanna make sure that we are not limiting what people are able to do, and obviously we have codes, but if there's minor things, Jeff, I think we need to go for that.
Trustee daily.
Um, it might be strange, but I'm really excited to talk about uh hall or licensing. Because I served on a policy council for solid ways uh for the county and all the local municipalities, and there is some really important parts that should be and need to be included in our licensing. Regarding how people get to and from the dump from a hall perspective, um, because we don't want them going up county right, county road, and I write in front of our school, so. Uh, I I'm excited to readdress that. I think the B is essential, because there is going to be significant administrative effort in order to manage that. Um, so that, that's something I I'm excited to talk about. Trash fee, you know, so hall or fee, um, regarding business licensing vendors, those kind of things, uh, there is additional administrative work that's required in order to. Make sure that we're getting sales tax for um services and goods that are sold in Wellington by people who usually don't do that. So um, your business license required to make sure we can continue recovering sales tax and make that. Accountable, um, and then it's even more difficult for businesses that don't reside in Wellington. So I'd love to hear more about that and stuff, but I do understand why there's multiple feet. Um, and then um. There, there's a lot of items. There are so many fees, and I thank you for your diligence in doing that, because this is one of the things that we find out like years later, be like, why aren't we charging for that? And nobody will know, but it, you guys are driving this effort, so I really appreciate it, because it's not things that I would think to ask for questions, so thank you to our staff for being so diligent. Rather than us meeting with department heads, because we all need this information. I think it would be more effective, and maybe we can talk about process as to getting explanations for all these fees. Um, I, I mean, that's part of what's going on right now. I I don't think we need to meet one-on-one to talk through all the fees necessarily. I think those could be descriptions that would be listed and then distributed to the entire group, so they're not taking enough time of department heads and those kind of things, just talking about fees. Um, those are pretty standard items. I think that could be described and laid out for all of us, so. Um, I might recommend doing that rather than doing individual meetings with each person, because. For one thing, I feel like everything should go through our town administrator regardless, so I I would trust her in collecting all that information, distributing that, so just a thought.
And I can tell you that most of the fees were um adopted by ordinance, so they will not be able to be changed through this resolution that we will be doing, so they're gonna have to stay the same until we can. Bring you an ordinance to change those fees, so it will buy us a little bit of time to um gather the information and maybe do a consultation.
Because right now you're just saying this is what they are.
This is, this is what they are. I mean, there's a couple that we're gonna recommend to increase, but they're just minor administrative ones, like I said, haven't been. Changed in, you know, ten, twelve years, and we just maybe start recovering the cost, but it's hard to, many ones, the majority of those ordinance, until that, we will not get to change those with this fee.
I did wanna have one comment, and I know this has been brought up several times about taking time for us to get information. Um, our job is to make good decisions with information that we need to have, and that means we need to ask the question. Now, there is a correct process, so that would be trustee keeps working with administrator Garcia, whether it's a combined meeting with her and the planning director, whether it's. Just meeting with the planning director, that's up to administrator Garcia, but we need to stop telling. Other members of this board that it's not okay for them to ask questions to get information. Just because you or I may not need the answers to that question to make our decision does not mean that we should be calling another elected official. They do not need to have information. If it is about decisions we're making, this is something that keeps being brought up. No, we should not be taking all of staff's time, and I do not think that's happening, but that is part of their job, is making sure we as trustees have the information we need to make a good decision. And that might look different for each of us, but we need to have the respect for each other to allow us to get that approach.
Thank you, trustee. Yeah, when it comes to uh. Yeah, when it comes to this, obviously, there's a lot of, a lot of boxes in the basement that gotta be gone through. Um, and you are working on it, got through what? I don't know, but you're doing great. Um, yeah.
This is a year-long process. We're figuring it out, so you'll have a much better document in two weeks. Um, I would love to just be able to adopt the fee schedule. And call it good, and then we can start working on whatever those changes are made and and. And something was required by law for us to have. I want you back. Thank you.
Next thing is the twenty twenty three budget.
Steve, so there is only one notable change from the last, you've seen this document. Um, our twenty twenty two budget in amount for janitorial services is actually only eighteen thousand dollars, so we've increased that line by one hundred and twenty-two percent based off of what the twenty twenty one actual was. Other than that, the budget's the last time you see. But did you say the janitorial was not much? We budgeted forty thousand dollars, so we increased one hundred and twenty-two percent from the twenty twenty two budget of eighteen thousand.
So with the trustee vegan questions? Trustee Mason. Trustee daily.
Appreciate the many opportunities for us to be there, and so I feel really confident at this point for our last, and thank you.
Trustee dear.
I appreciate Dixon, Department of Services. Um, no, my comments are the same as they've been, like, to see us get to a balanced budget and reduce some of our land, but other than that, no other comments.
I do have one line item, two oh one dash one one dash five nine five zero. It is page sixty-eight. And it says fireworks, um, eight thousand nine forty-five. And then the twenty twenty-two budget is a hundred and seven thousand five hundred. So and then the twenty twenty-three budget is fifty-one four oh seven. Um. I'm lost. Is that how much we approved for our fireworks?
So understand what is currently being reworded as fireworks, that you have to remember that used to be the board discretionary or the board outreach fund, which included the Main Streets contract. And it could Boys and Girls Club. So that item there that is highlighted as fireworks is going to no longer serve any purpose other than the fireworks, which is the budget fifty-one four oh seven. Because Main Streets potentially, we're looking at bringing that in a separate point, and the board decided to decrease to just having everything in the board discretionary fund, which is the twenty thousand in line two one eleven five nine fifty-one. So just understand where you see fireworks, that used to be the board outreach, so that included your Main Streets and your um. Boys and Girls Club, twenty-five thousand. That's what that number was for last year, so that's why you see that drop.
I had a resident reach out to me and tell me, we only paid this much. She told me, I'm like, I don't know where.
Instead of creating a new line item, I just named the line item and what it was, because they decided to get rid of that.
Got it. Awesome.
You're putting now, perfect. I have no questions. Thank you. Um, public comment? Direction from the board, and I think we're all in agreeance there, right?
I'm waiting for one thing to come back from Campbell's, um, and Ms. Garcia, it was related to fund balances and allotment. For that thirty, for the thirty-three percent or four months of. Just to be, I'm, I'm gonna be this wiki wheel on this one. I really believe, and I know we say we don't have the funds, and that's why I'm kind of digging into fund out the, what's the fund balance and how much money we have to have for funds. I'm gonna be a stickler on adding an officer for Wellington. That's kind of. One of those things, when we get down to it, a lot of this stuff, as I told Patty, is great. And planning and what trustees do, but one of our four responsibilities. For via constitution is taking. So, and we are inevitably saying that we are not going to add another officer, but we see. Fentanyl usage go up here in town. You guys read the same report that I do. The crime right now is extremely high. The higher than what I've, I've seen in a long time. We had issues way back when, you've been here as long as I have. But I'm, I'm still gonna be a stickler on trying to figure out where we can get funds for the corporal. That's what, that was what was requested, correct, was a, a corporal? Is there, there is nothing as far as. Allocations and the fund balances where we're keeping too much money in a fund that we could be utilizing.
So I think I, I, I mean, we were planning on readdressing this later on in the year, and if I recall correctly. It was not gonna set us back whether we did it now or then based off of training of an individual or getting that individual picked by the sheriff's department and getting implemented on staff.
Well, he did about six months.
Minimum six months.
Yeah.
Right, and so. I mean, correct, I mean.
Yes, that's correct. Uh, if we decided to, to um promote the focal today, it's gonna take some time to get that person selected. A few months to get that person selected, trained up and into the position, so it's not something that we can do, just do a quick turnaround.
Right, right, so but if we wait even longer to look at this, that's how much longer we're waiting to look at implementing it. That was my concern.
A technical answer, do we have enough money in fund balance? I don't wanna say that we do, but we do. Um, the concern I have in this is we talked a lot about this in the finance committee in several polls, so because we're still working on the audit from twenty-one. Um, we are gonna see a portion of property taxes that are withheld from that until we get our audit done for twenty twenty-one. That will likely be first or second quarter of next year. Now, it's not a major source. Most of our income comes from sales tax, but that is something that is gonna adjust the budget early to twenty twenty-three. Um, my concern also is just with the state of the economy, and this has been brought up in the finance committee too. It's just that we really need to try and be as tight as we possibly can on the budget. And so to go and add another provision, I I agree, I'd love to be able to put that in there. Um, I don't, we're already going about, in general, fund alone, we're already going about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars into our fund balance. If you look at just straight revenues versus, I think roughly, it was, it might have gone down a little bit. Was it two twenty, and then we reduced some of ours that went down a little bit? I might be slightly off, but somewhere in that range. Um, and if we were to look at adding a corporal position, and we would be taking basically an additional. Exact numbers, but we're talking another or fifty-ish, maybe more thousand on top of that, that we'd be going farther into fund balance. Which I personally have major concerns with, with, uh, again, just with the economy where it's at right now. I have concerns. Are we even gonna see the conservative revenues that we projected? I'm glad we're projecting conservative, which, thank you, but even if those don't come in. Now that fund balance starts to get very, very precious, because we don't know what things are looking like before, so that's where I would be very cautious about. Even though I agree with adding an officer, I just don't think, no, I'm trying to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think that the board, I think we're all kind of along that line. Um, we need to have an emergency fund for what's unforeseen. And so I mean, I'm on a line of data, I'm not. So, or direction. I mean, we're saying go forward with it. Um, we need to. Do the best we can, we'll have, and we've done that, and budget considerably, then. So indeed, and uh, I appreciate all that.
We're not gonna have, so that's, I would love for our town line going four hours in the fridge.
Did she want to address the fund balance? I think she was planning on doing that during the financial report. Actually go to page. One twenty-one in your packet, and that's gonna be your overall. Um, general funds balance sheet. And so if you look at. And so if you look at line item. Two oh one zero zero twenty-nine fifty, that's your general fund fund balance. So that is as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. I'm sorry, I just got there, what, what number, two oh one zero zero twenty-nine twenty?
Bottom of the page. Very, very long.
So we do have a healthy general fund fund balance, it is. Not out of the norm to use that fund balance kind of as your home saving account to make up those budgetary shortfall, but. Getting direction in two different ways here, one is I wanna balance budget, and one is I wanna eat into our savings to add these positions. So I would probably need clear direction from the board.
So the line item, so nine million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Assets with your capital.
Just to the, it's the eight point, eight point three million, just to the left above that.
And that's why I was looking to see how much we actually had, what's legally required of us.
So we have to have three months operating out of that amount, which is the calculation they use to present the budget first.
Got it, what was that amount?
I haven't counted it written down, I was gonna present.
That's what I was waiting for.
Our final budget presentation of all of our set members.
Got it, so we can stay a hundred thousand, we're gonna have leftover or millions?
We have a healthy fund balance that would be closer to, you know.
So, but we can add an officer, which is one of those things that. I mean, this is the savings to protect our residents.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm all protecting the residents, I think having a twenty-four hour coverage is more or less a scheduling thing that we can work out with the Sheriff's Department, they're currently working on. So I don't know, so adding another staff member is gonna make that more possible, it's, it's easy enough to move around some scheduling and have that twenty-four hour coverage.
Do you remember watching that presentation, have you went back, because it would, it would be taxing.
So.
To have that availability.
What's my first amendment?
Yeah, go for it.
You know, kind of a compromise, I agree, you know, adding an officer to public safety is important for the community. And we often usually want to be very quickly responsible, so generally when we budget, we overfund either salaries, benefits and wages or professional services, one to offset the other, because we're anticipating. We'll never have all of those positions filled throughout the year, generally. So when you don't have that position filled, sometimes that's offset to professional services. But I would anticipate that we would probably. Based off the current workforce market, not be able to fill some of our vacancies. And so by the end of first quarter of twenty twenty-three, I would be curious to know where we're at relative to that, because I think that what we. What I predict we'll be able to do potentially is be able to fund an officer through vacancy tables and other positions. So it's. We would be kind of sort of budgeting for it, but. Planning and executing based off of current conditions and not.
Factually.
Yeah.
Like lower amounts after the audit, maybe that makes sense.
So I think we all want that additional officer and sit there, but, you know, taking money out of our statements, kind of, I think is super irresponsible right now. But I would highly anticipate that we'll have vacancy tables and fund it through that. And your financial statements do show your year-to-date percentage versus how much of the year has lapsed, so just in your finance department alone. We've only extended twenty-six percent of our wages and salary, fifty percent of the year has lapsed, based on this report, so there is some savings. That's why I provided you this report, so you can see where we're over, where we're under. And right now, I don't have a clear picture of how we're gonna end the year, because this is going into quarter two. But once I have that data, we can come back with better numbers of what rollover amounts we have. Would you be favorable to that, trustee Keith?
Yeah, I, I am, I just, that was one of my, my things as I read the, our weekly reports. Is I don't see those line items increasing, I see them increasing, and the kinds of crime that is happening is. More excessive than what even I've seen since I've been reading the reports, so that was my concern for this, it's just public station in general. I'm, I'm a cool to that, but.
I want to reinforce that point, can you make the priority to come back and revisit this conversation of the first quarter twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, that's great, and I think that's, we can even look at a budget amendment, because there are several things will happen, like Q one of twenty twenty-three. We won't have audited numbers for twenty twenty-two, but we should have at least numbers, it's okay, roughly, here to re-end of the year, so we'll know. Right now, we know where we're at at Q two, but we'll have an idea of where do we end twenty twenty-two, so we'll know, fund balance looking good, is it looking short? We'll also have had three months of twenty-three to see what's happening with the economy, is it staying okay, is it tanking, is it getting stronger? And then we will hopefully be close to getting in process of our audit for twenty-one, and so we'll be also entering that process of getting. The property taxes coming back in, and so I think that we'll be in a much better place to understand where we're at financially. And then we can, at that point, if we say, okay, things are looking good, I would be open to say, okay, let's even look at the budget amendment, if you need to, to say, okay, let's add this in. I just, right now, where there's so many unknowns, I think the best option would be, let's get the end of year numbers, let's revisit Q one. And then we can decide, does this make sense, and then we can L C S O start the process.
Yeah, and I, I also believe that it gives L C S O time to adjust their scheduling, see how that works, see how taxing it is, and then. Even have facts from then on, hey, is this something that is absolutely necessary, or are we already covering it with what we have with the schedule change? So then you have the full picture, broad picture of what's actually going on, we can make a very educated decision at that point.
And then you can bring the reconcile twenty twenty-two year end numbers, even though they're not audited, they're. Fairly finalized, and we can have a discussion based off that end of your financial report that we pull from our accounting system, and we can have a clear picture of what we.
So I was the board, I guess, the direction is keep the fund balance. And we'll.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah. Power reports.
No reports, thank you.
Staff. Thank you. L C S O.
Evening, board, Sergeant Cherry, I don't, you already had the packet of her as far as what's in it, so there's, there's nothing earth shattering, shattering in there. September just was a hugely busy month for us, training wise, a lot of our deputies were either training. Training with tasers or doing additional DUI training, those types of things, so it was just a very busy month. That resulted, it did keep us off the street, just had some of our self-disability activity. That was reduced, but what else is already reduction dispatch calls, just over September and August, less, less called. Not a bad thing altogether, I was looking for some of the, looking at the calls for service comparison, one of the. The things that struck me was the three hundred and fifty percent increase in drug cases. Looked at a few of those cases, some of them where we found or prepared money in the park. But some of those weren't actually traffic stops, resulted in seizures of various narcotics, for methamphetamine, cocaine, to fentanyl tablets. So we're seeing, we're seeing an increase in drug cases. I just had a conversation with our drug task force today, and they are aware of what's going on, it's not. A gigantic problem, but so we have some people that are keeping an eye on, some residences that we're keeping an eye on, drug task force is interested in that as well, so. Some other things that we're looking at, just pedestrian contacts, we just contacted more people that might feel suspicious. School checks, we've increased that significantly within, around the schools a lot more, just sometimes, you know, just. Parking in the, the school parking lot, just new reports or something like that, it's gonna be. A disturbance, does not say. Nothing else that I'm seeing that is giving me any concern. Our traffic citations are up, which continue to make traffic reinforcements, traffic safety a priority in town, just to kind of keep our citizens safe. That's about it, to answer your question regarding, just so that the changes as far as our staffing. I'm still planning on doing a twenty-four hour coverage, moving some deputies around for two thousand twenty-three, I think that'll be a huge benefit. To the town, but we'll figure out, you know, what that looks like with the corporal myself, kind of bouncing back and forth, so we can best cover the towns. As best I can, sorry, tired. Any questions in the board?
That's amazing, no questions.
No, I talked to you earlier today, so, okay.
No, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Okay. After, any board reports?
Let's get it short, so we had several requests actually come out to the office hour, he did Saturday, I think, Saturday street, two Saturdays ago. And I know one of the requests that was brought out, we did receive an email about the mosquito spraying that happened here in the town. And that individual actually did come to the office hour, just to be with the trustee to kind of share her thoughts and concerns, and really where it was, was not so much. Her philosophy is, I don't like, you guys don't have property, it's just that when they go down spraying down the street, and it starts actually moving into private property. And really, the request was, could we get something, whether be put on as an agenda item for us to actually look into some different options? She gave some options of, holders got some different ways that they're doing it, where they deal with mosquitoes, but not damaging other insect life, so for her, you had a really thriving garden, and it pretty much killed everything. She came back from vacation, and not only were there mosquitoes, there were all the other bugs that she peppered on. And it was right after we had sprayed, so she had a lot of suggestions on ways to look at, what can we change up, whether we change how we do it, or where we do that. But just her request was that, means the board take that seriously, and find a way to, whether it's we take that, is word in good direction, staff to look into some options that were presented, or how we handle that. But I did want to bring that report back to everyone else.
Thank you. I'm worried about that.
Oh, I got some.
Oh, I was asking, I was asking, we talked about his report as a whole.
I'm awesome, awesome to look at it, or address it, if there's different ways we can go about it.
Uh, trustee Keith, you have any board reports?
Bunanza was awesome, I learned so much, I learned more probably from the Bunanza than I did sitting in the meeting from the board packet, so thank you for putting on a quality presentation. And then I just want to give the staff a heads up that next year for budget for twenty twenty-three, I'm gonna come in hot-headed on cemetery. So that's a, a section of the town that is sorely neglected.
Agreed.
Overlooked all of the time, and it's a very important part of the community, and so next year, I'd like to, like, really focus on some budgeting for improving our cemetery. But not twenty, not right now.
It's on the radar.
Nothing to report?
A report from the Parks and Rec advisory board, they're doing some really cool stuff, and they are compiling some wish lists for the community and from that group. Just to bring us to what they might prioritize, or things important for the town, it's a group of a lot of really dedicated individuals with a lot at stake. Regarding Parks and Rec, and they have a lot of passion, so I'm really excited to see that, and I'm gonna be doing the presentation of board in the near future. So it's fantastic news. And then also for the policy council or solid waste for the county and local municipalities. During the November meeting, we will be reviewing, as I mentioned, kind of ask for your direction, we'll be reviewing the M O U and the county solid waste master plan. To kind of bring it up to the track of what we've missed deadline-wise, what are the actual priorities? And how the county and everyone together are making decisions together to realign and do better. So I'm very excited about that conversation, and that's gonna be the November meeting. I also wanted to say a sincere thank you for Bunanza, Budget Bunanza, by the time I got there, I think there was already like ninety or a hundred people who'd come through. The children's area that was hosted by the library was phenomenal. All the kids interacting, seeing some new items, understanding what kind of investment the library could be looking for. Was amazing, everybody was engaged, I think the kids probably got the most out of that entire thing, at least one was. And then every single presentation that I sat in and looked at, if anything, was. A great opportunity to celebrate everything that's happened, they have photos of all the projects, of the water plant, of the wastewater treatment plant. Everything that's been accomplished recently, and it fills my heart with all the work that our staff in our town is doing. And it's amazing to recognize that and also know that we're playing for the future, so it was a wonderful event. And very cool for the Pumpkins, and I saw so many families there, people we don't usually see in meetings, and I think that's such a big part, is that we are soliciting feedback. From people who we don't usually hear from, and I think that's wonderful, so thank you, thank you, and. Round applause for Mahila in general, too, for everything she did for us. Two things happening this weekend that are super fun, on Saturday, a lot of local businesses are hosting stops for a zombie crawl. I will be volunteering my time, my time in doing zombie makeup for people, anybody who wants to do that. Both the events this weekend and on Monday for Halloween are free. And then if anything, you get savings for everywhere they go, and free stuff out of it. So zombie crawl starts at five on Saturday, I'll leave and help prep in advance or get makeup earlier, if you would like. And then that's all around town, businesses on Main Street and elsewhere, so really cool, and there's gonna be a dance party. Where I will be at, if you wanna come dance with me. Oh, there's, there's going to be a thriller.
Okay.
Thing at Old Colorado, a lesson, and then there's gonna be a full-on mountain rash dance party later on that evening, so look for flyers. Or visiting your local businesses, because a lot of them are participating. The other thing is on Monday, it's trick or treat down Main Street, which is a huge event that we do every year, so if you haven't done it, definitely do that, starts at four P M on Halloween. Immediately after kids are getting out of school, so that's always crazy, but it's a really great state trick-or-treating environment. Where the whole town comes together to support it, so if you haven't done that before, please do it, support, of course, all those entities that are. Going, doing it, Wellington Main Street program, American Legion, chambers involved, a bunch of different organizations, and nobody makes money off this. A lot of the things are fundraising effort, this is absolutely not that, this is them just spending money to encourage community. And make the kids, so definitely support those organizations and see if they're good. Thank you.
I don't have anything to report, other than I'd like to just thank all the citizens that were involved in the roundtable, everything, get those rates set up, and for staff, working diligently and very hard to get numbers to us, plans, options. Thank you, I love you for working hard. I think this board making progress, I think. You know, we are coming together, we're starting to gain some steam, and working through differences. I'm just proud of everybody up here for making that a priority and working towards that. We're obviously gonna be perfect, I would hope, we could be as close to it. So, that's all I have to say. Motion to adjourn.
I, alright.